All right. We're starting the January 8, 2024 City Commission meeting, the very first meeting of the year. Happy New Year to everyone. And we're starting with Commissioner Douglas giving the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
Real estate developers love Bradford pear trees. They mature quickly and bloom prettily in early spring, but they are not resilient or long-lasting. They never grow tall enough to provide effective shade. As we plan for Royal Oak's future, let us avoid the pitfalls of immediate gratification and think beyond our generation to our children and their children. We should literally and figuratively plant oak trees. Our landscaping and our politics should have deep roots and strong trunks. They should shelter our families, clean the air and water, and beautify our neighborhoods. But oak trees grow slowly, so we at this table must heed the Greek proverb that says, "A society grows great when old men plant trees whose shade they know they will never sit in." Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Douglas. So we are moving on with the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion? Commissioner Douglas, I'm sorry, Commissioner Collo. And Commissioner Macy, second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So we have an agenda. Moving forward with item number five, there's the presentation of the library annual report. And we do have Director Irwin. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Hunt, Commission. I appreciate you taking the time to hear the library's annual report from fiscal year 2022 and '23. You may see some familiar faces on this page. We've got our board president, Melanie Macy. Shannon Carlson is our vice president. Sharon Stanton, whose time just finished on the board, was our secretary. Michelle Cook, Matthew Dyer, Lauren Jazinski, Christine Jones, and Joshua Sipes are all our board members. We do have a new board member, but not from this fiscal year report, so you'll get to hear more about Shannon Tierney next year. I'm going to skip by this part because I cover a lot of this at the end. So as we're looking at our revenues, we had some great revenues. We brought in about 3.3 million in a variety of things. One thing that libraries get throughout the state is penal fines. So that's when there are fees paid to the courts for certain things. As we move forward with society becoming more aware of how penal fines affect people, that amount of money goes down, and it's gone down every year, and I anticipate it continuing to go down. We also get state aid for libraries, which is from the legislature, and they distribute that every year. We get a certain amount per capita. And there's a variety of other things. We do get donations, but we don't rely on those donations for operating. Our expenditures pretty much balance out the same as to how much we spend. Most of our costs are personnel, as it is in most organizations. That's with salaries and benefits. We spend money on our materials, both physical and electronic materials. We had some capital projects over the past couple of years where we were improving the interior of the library. You can see some of those pictures that are on the screen. We've got staff showing off a new display, some new tables that we have, seating in our teen area, et cetera. So we spent about 3.3 million in the last fiscal year. Statistics, this is always a fun part. If you don't like statistics, I'm sorry, you're not going to like this presentation. I love statistics. Statistics tell a story. Statistics are telling us that more people have library cards than they have had in a really long time, not just during the pandemic, but pre-pandemic as well. We have about 28,074 library cards that are for Royal Oak residents and employees. So if you work in a Royal Oak, but you don't live here, you could also get a library card. Just ask us about it. We've also had an increase in our visitors now. 2020 was a dismal year. I'm so glad 2020 is behind us, but it doesn't mean that the pandemic is behind us as well. But our visitors, we had 31,000 visitors in 2020 and '21, but last year we had 155,456 visitors, which is a lot, and it's definitely at pre-pandemic levels. For our programs and attendance, we stuck, we were pretty steady during the pandemic. A lot of people attended our virtual programs, and the team should be really proud of everything that they did, bringing that to people's homes so that people did not just have to sit and watch TV. They could read books, they could participate in programs and communicate with other people. But we did get pretty tired of screens. I don't know if anybody else got tired of screens, but I certainly did. But our programs have kept up. We do some online still. We have a lot of people in our community who are still homebound and do participate in the virtual programs that we have, but most of our programs are in person. For our database use, not surprising, database use was at its peak really in 2020 and '21 during the pandemic. That's when people were really looking to find their information and get good, valid information, and that's when database use really peaked, and it has gone down significantly since then. I'm not surprised by that at all, and hopefully you aren't either. Our collection size also goes down. What does that mean? So our physical collection, we only have so much space in the library. So if you go in the library, you can see shelves, and those shelves don't magically expand. So we have to continually reduce the collection in order to make space for all the new things. We need to reduce that collection by something we call weeding. So you look at the condition of materials, the date of the information in the materials. There's some standards for how old something should be in a library based on a certain subject. And we take those materials out, update those, and bring new materials in. So our collection size is going down a bit because we are making space for all the new things and also making it easier for people to browse the shelves. So you don't go up to a shelf, and it's really crowded, and you have to yank something off, and five items come off with it. That's the thing that we want to avoid. And our circulation is really high. You can see that our circulation, which includes our e-materials, was at about 572,000 items last year. That is a lot. Computer use. When we did our remodel in the library, we cut down our computer lab. We created a small conference room, and we reduced the physical computers for adults in half, but we also provided Chromebooks that people can borrow in the library and use them anywhere in the space. Our computer use has not gone down. It has actually gone up, and it's at pre-pandemic levels as well. And people appreciate being able to take those Chromebooks and use them anywhere in the library. We also have ones that people can check out and take home, as well as hotspots that they can check out and take home for internet connections as well. And reference questions, those keep going up. People want answers. They want answers. We're willing to give it to them. We want you to find the right information, so it's not just somebody coming up and asking where the bathroom is. It is people looking for good, valid information, a book recommendation, other things. So everything that's not a directional, not a bathroom question, those are reference questions, and those keep going up as well. Some of the highlights that we have from 2022 and '23, our millage passed in August of 2022, and they gave us 10 years of our millage. We have one mill of taxes, and that started in July of 2023. Our board completed a systematic review of all of our policies. That's a lot of work to go through a dozen or more policies and make sure that they were all up to date, and then we'll be revising some more this year. We completed the remodel of our space. So during the pandemic, the flooring was all replaced. Our children's room was updated, but we updated the upper level as well, which has Commissioner Collo's favorite spot, the laptop bar, and a fireplace, and some great lounge seating, as well as some study tables and some new shelving, et cetera. We premiered new newsletters that are very specific. So if you happen to like adult services, you can get the leaflet. If you like youth services and you want to know what new picture books are coming your way, if you're really, really interested in library administration, and I hope you all are, because we do a lot with our board. We're developing the policies and doing all the things. We have a specialized library administration newsletter that I think everybody should get. It's short, it's sweet, and it's informative. Our active library cards are the highest level since 2016. We completed a user survey back in the fall of 2022, and we use those results to help drive what we're doing in the future. Our board approved temporary library cards to assist the unhoused in getting access to library materials. So if a person is unhoused and they're unhoused in Royal Oak, they can get a library card. It's easier for them to both use computers, but they can check out five items at any time. The board also approved becoming what's called a Melcat Visiting Patron Library. Melcat is the Michigan Electronic Library System. It's where we get interlibrary loans from throughout the state. And if you're a Melcat Visiting Patron Library, you can go to any of the participating libraries and check out books from there. You just have to register your library card with them, and you're good to go, and then you can return it in Royal Oak when you come back home. So if you're up skiing, a boy, you can get a car, you can get a card and some materials, and we'll return them for you. We also partnered with the Rink for what was called EduSkate, where people got free skate rentals for a library checkout. We upgraded our Wi-Fi. We celebrated the building's 60th anniversary. So the building right here downtown is 60 years old. Well, now it's going to be 61 this year, so it's aging. But we did celebrate the 60th anniversary last spring. We conducted outreach to senior living facilities. We received a grant from Michigan Humanities to host the Black History 101 Mobile Museum right before Juneteenth. We hosted the Royal Oak Chamber of Commerce Coffee Connection in June. The Girl Scout troop donated a buddy bench, which we have a picture right here. They wanted a place for kids to be able to sit outside, especially as they're waiting for rides when the weather is nice, and it's been very popular. And we also had another bench donated in the memory of a gentleman who passed away. His family donated a bench, and it faces the Veterans Memorial. And I get a lot of comments from people, especially our volunteers in the Butterfly Gardens, say that a lot of people sit there, and they do a lot of reflection as they're viewing the memorial, and it's a good, nice, quiet spot to share somebody's memory. In '23 and '24 so far, you can't get away without me sharing something about this new year. We have our Royal Oak Public Library app, which you can get on your App Store or in Google Play. It's really great. You can see what you have checked out. You can place items on hold. You can link your family cards. So if you are in a household with other adults or children, you can link all their cards and manage everybody's accounts at the same time. It also has your barcode on it, so you never need to share, bring a library card again. You'll have your library barcode right there, and you can have your children's barcodes. Look, Commissioner Douglas is sharing her app on her phone. I love the app. I think it's great. We began offering Comics Plus, which is a database of thousands of comics for all ages. You can use the Library Pass app to access that on your own device if you like comics and graphic novels. We started home delivery of materials to homebound patrons. We're still working out some of the kinks on that, but it's going well so far. We moved a youth librarian and our administrative assistant into full-time positions. One of the board's goals was to develop more of a full-time staffing model than we had in the past, and this was a commitment that they made, so we moved two people into full-time positions. We also have filling some vacancies we had, where some part-time librarians, a part-time computer aide, and two part-time library aides. So we had some new people join our team. And our board approved their 2024 to 2030 capital improvements project plan. So we have plans to spend that millage money and improve that building. Things you can't always see, like you're not looking at the boiler, but we're going to need new boiler in the next few years. I know you're dying to know that information, but it's really important. We're going to get a roof next year. We're going to have solar, which was something the commission had voted on, was to provide solar at the library with ARPA funds. And so there's a lot of different things the library is doing, and I hope that you all enjoy and appreciate the hard work of the staff. I think they're a hardworking staff, and they do a lot of good for our community. Any questions?
Does anyone have any questions for Director Irwin? Commissioner Douglas?
What percentage of your, when you talk about how much your circulation is, is that just our books circulating, or does that take into account books that are coming in from the Melcat?
It takes into account all the books that people from Royal Oak are checking out from everywhere. So whether it's the Melcat throughout the state, or we're part of the library network, which is a group of libraries throughout Oakland County and our area, and we're all connected, and you can borrow books directly from them, but it includes all of that.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions for Director Irwin? Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Thank you again for coming out tonight. This is one of my favorite presentations every year. It's not a big secret. I truly miss being on the library board. Commissioner Macy beat me in our wrestling for that. This year has been amazing. The new app is great. I know it's made it easier to assess materials, and I just think that's always been a mission of the libraries to innovate, connect, and create, but then beyond that, the vision is to make sure that there's accessibility for all. That's been huge, and you see that through the works in action. So thank you again for another great year of providing information to the community. And I promise to return the switch game that my son's had for a week too long now, so he'll come back soon.
Well, I have to thank you for leading such a dedicated group of individuals that lead our library. Everywhere I go, whenever I mention that, I'm from the city of Royal Oak. One thing people always say is how much they love our library, how many things we have to offer, and literally things with the library of things. But also, it's inclusive. It allows, it provides material for everyone to come in and enjoy, so I thank you for that.
Thank you very much. And I would like to share, I would be remiss if I didn't share, that we currently have an exhibit in the library called Achievement. It's from the Automotive Hall of Fame. They brought their exhibit over to the library, where you can learn about 19 African-American individuals throughout history that are part of the Automotive Hall of Fame. And then on Friday, they're doing a lecture at 2:00, and they'll give a little tour of that exhibit as well, when I got a tour of the exhibit at the Automotive Hall of Fame before we accepted it into the library. The history is fascinating. So if you have time on Friday at 2:00, I highly recommend going. I would also be remiss if I did not thank our library board for being innovative and dedicated. They are a group of volunteers who give their time to the library and to your community, and I think they do a great job, and they really strive to be inclusive of our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Irwin. I think we can close the book on that one and move forward to...
Here we go. I had to do it.
It's the chair. So we're going to move forward with public comment, item number six. So the City Commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the City Commission on any city-related issues, both on the agenda and not. And I will say that there is a public hearing later in the meeting for the 811 East 11 Mile Road project. But I ask that all the comments be directed to the City Commission and not to individual commissioners. In addition to public comment, there will be a public hearing at tonight's meeting. If you are here to comment on the public hearing of the boutique hospitality company, DBA Hotel in Royal Oak, you may wait until the time at which the public hearing is opened and comment at that time. If you wish to speak tonight at either public comment or the public hearing, please wait until recognized by me, Mayor Pro Tim Hunt, and then come to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and address. Please be mindful that the City Commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak. Comments are limited to three minutes or less per speaker, not per topic, and the exception of the public hearing where you may rise to speak to that once opened. There is a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time allotted. If you do not wish to speak tonight, please do not hesitate to email or call any city commissioner with your comments. Please note that the City Commission will not respond directly to questions during public comment. However, we are taking notes, and we'll address questions when the agenda topic is discussed or refer to it, or refer it to the proper city department if that matter is not scheduled on tonight's agenda. And our interim city manager is also taking notes, and we'll look into the matter as needed. So with that said, we can open public comment. Mr. Gittinger.
Good evening. My name is Jason Gittinger. I live at 2705 Collison Avenue, and I chair the Commission for the Arts for you guys. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your commitment to the arts, for your support of all of the wonderful volunteers and board members that are part of that organization. I know it's on the consent agenda, our annual report tonight. So that's presented to you guys with love from me. And I also wanted to thank our wonderful city staff, Susan, and our great graduate fellows that we have that work with us. They do a fantastic job helping the city encourage and support arts and culture. So I hope you guys will keep that as a mission going forward, and thank you, Melanie, for joining our team. So thank you, guys, for all of that effort, and I hope you guys have a great meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Harrison?
Thank you. I was kind of hoping the mayor would be here. Regarding the city financial status, I'm very disappointed that you have continually lied to us regarding the financial status of the city. The deficit extends beyond the automobile parking system. However, as a downtown property owner, I am particularly concerned as to the potential impact on the DDA. The DDA always ends up being called upon to bail out the city finances. I'm thankful for the state, that the state has stepped up to expose the financial deficit and is demanding a plan to correct it. I'm confounded that you are now planning on spending more money for a community center slash YMCA. Remember the old adage, "If you're in a hole, stop digging." At the last commission meeting, Commissioner Douglas inquired if they could preclude the interim city manager from reducing staff. Between 2013 and 2023, the city manager's staff increased from an equivalent of two and a half to seven, which is 180% increase. Now, a sustainability manager has been added. What we need is a sustainable budget. You have an animal shelter manager that is paid more than either police or fire. This is not right. I favor the Lee Iacocca approach. When Iacocca took over Chrysler, he asked the top executives to submit letters of resignation. He then returned the letters to those that he wanted to keep. Never fails, you socialists are like financial locusts. You will spend until you have destroyed the financial viability of the city. Thank you.
All right. Who's next? Anyone? Oh, sorry. The back.
Evening. My name is Matthew Cornelius, and I live at 116 Kizer Avenue, and this is regarding the development at 611 Mile Road. So I understand that he's gone through and done a ton of revisions towards his plans, but still, the height of the building is my concern because that fourth story will be able to look directly into my backyard, invading my privacy for somebody else's property. And as I do in my business, I try to come to an issue with a solution. And I do believe that this also goes towards the master plan as well. So any multi-use building, and especially towards rental properties or something along those lines, looking into single-family districts, there should be some sort of line of trees that is on the property of that multi-use property to block any sort of visible angle into somebody's backyard, as well as increasing your green zones across the board. It's a place to plow snow into. It's a place for some sort of noise dampening from the noise barrier between the two. And I would highly recommend that this council take a look at adding that to his plan or requesting that, as well as adding it to any sort of master plan that you guys are doing moving forward. I think that that is a win-win-win situation across the board, and it is something that is not astronomical to ask as a single-family homeowner that borders that property. Secondarily, I did not know about this meeting until I received a flyer from my neighbors. So what I would ask of this council is, is there some sort of technological way that we can add our email address to certain line items or certain agenda items when you guys have recurring meetings so that we, as the public, can keep up with what's going on? I understand agendas change all the time, but this way, it's a paperless solution for us to be able to keep informed on developments of certain interests like the 600 building. Other than that, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else have any public comment for this evening? All right. So we are closing public comment, and we're moving forward with the consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything off of the consent? I will reopen because I don't know if I missed your hand or not, so come on up, Ms. Poprovsky. Yes.
Can I speak from there? I'm having a really hard time tonight. I can talk pretty loud.
Can you hear my mic?
I think it's going to be hard for me to stand.
Would it be possible to maybe move that chair up? Is that a good idea?
No.
Can I take another mic?
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you. That's what I need. Thank you very much. No, that's good. Thank you. It's only going to take me a minute. Nancy Poprovsky, Happy New Year. Should one business owner, or wait a minute, I'm doing well tonight, concerning all of Royal Oak entertainment venues, should one business owner have the power to control blocks of people and change their well-being and lifestyles for themselves and their patrons? I support Royal Oakers victimized by blaring loud music venues and bars with rowdy drunken patrons that flow into their neighborhoods either by foot or car, maybe gathering in front of their homes while very drunk, disrupting their well-being, especially if there are long hours of operations. The residents also have long hours of operations that should always be considered first because they live there 24/7, and the owners and customers do not. I'm an old hippie, not against marijuana, liquor, dancing, fun and entertainment, but I really hope the city of Royal Oak, even if they approve things that are fun, if they promote things that are fun, that they will be there for the citizens when things go wrong. You know things are going to go wrong when you add liquor. You know things are going to go wrong when you get something loud. So when you approve things, when you're making sure that these people get what they want, please reverse that. Go for the residents first, then talk to the promoters. And about the liquor license for Hotel Royal Oak, this is partially what I'm talking about because, well, by the way, the hotel owner lives across from a church. Wild bunch. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are closing public comment for real this time and moving forward with consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything off of consent agenda? Commissioner Macy?
Yeah. Hi. H-I.
Okay. Anyone else?
And about the liquor license for Hotel Royal Oak, this is partially what I'm talking about. Because, well, by the way, the hotel owner lives across from a church. Wild bunch. Amen. Thank you. Thank you. And we are closing public comment for real this time and moving forward with consent agenda. Would anyone like to pull anything off of consent agenda? Commissioner Macy?
Yeah. Hi. H.I.
Okay. Okay. So we are pulling H, lowercase i, off of the consent agenda. Would anyone like to make a motion for the consent agenda? Commissioner Colo? Any second. Commissioner Douglas? Any question or comment, discussion? All right. All in favor of the consent agenda consisting of everything with the exception of H.I.? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, Commissioner Macy?
I just saw Sparkman lurking in the back and thought she might want to say a few words about the Commission for the Arts.
Thank you. Our fellow this evening is off celebrating as she is a Wolverine, so I was already here, so I was like, I'll cover it. Hey, where's your team at tonight? Don't hate, my team didn't do well either. So the Commission for the Arts, my apologies, I'm a circle. So the Commission for the Arts has done a lot of regrouping in the last year. They have brought back the Artist Laureate Program as well as the Painted Piano Project. These are two programs that actually took a little bit of a break as we regrouped post-pandemic. The Commission for the Arts was one of the boards that just kind of took a break in general during the pandemic and didn't really meet. And so this group kind of got back off their feet and started with a couple other programs. And so this year, they were really excited to be able to bring back these two programs. We really appreciated all the folks who helped us with both, as well as our new Artist Laureate as well. A couple of things that we did want to highlight as well from the murals. We have several new murals in the program this year in various businesses. Most closely, we have Comet Burgers on the alley side and just down the alleyway on the north end taproom as well. And then across Main Street, over by the gas station on 11 Mile, there's the cosmetics store that has the art deco one that is done as well. So we've gotten quite a few new murals this year, which is really exciting. The Hamer Finch Wilkins project is moving forward and looking to install art in the spring, so we have some ideas there as well and kind of looking forward to working with Ms. Davids on an opportunity there, too. In the year ahead, the Commission for the Arts is really looking to expand their outreach with different artists beyond our own community and continue to build connections with other cities and with other artists in other places to kind of help continue to round out not only the variety of art, but the variety of identities and artists that come along with that. So we're really looking forward to the next year and bringing in some new art. Are there any questions on the Commission for the Arts?
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Sparkman? Any, should I ask any comments for Ms. Sparkman?
I'm sorry, my team didn't do well either this year.
I was going to say, your team's watching and my team.
Right? We're literally right there.
Well, thank you, Ms. Sparkman. This was a receive and file, so there's no.
Yes, there's no.
If I can.
This is, just as last year, too, it's a lovely presentation. Who designed this year's?
Ms. Davids.
Okay. It's beautiful.
So we'll, so the, similar to last year, not this, not your agenda, but the report itself, we'll kind of print it out in a couple of books. They did really well in the lobby here, and we'll probably put some over at the library as well. Senior Center.
Thank you, Ms. Sparkman. So we're moving to item eight of the agenda, the Michigan Liquor License Commission establishment of a public hearing and approval of a request of a new plan of operation for boutique hotel company LLC Hotel Royal Oak. There is a public hearing for this particular agenda item, and I think we're going to hold a public hearing first. You say it. Okay. I will defer to.
Start with staff.
All right. We will start with staff. Mr. Twain, do you have?
I'll head it off for you since I wrote the cover letter, if I may. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight before you is a request from Boutique Hospitality LLC to, who's proposing a new plan of operation located at 811 East 11 Mile Road. This new plan of operation proposes to transfer a resort Class C liquor license with Sunday sales and canceling the existing special purpose permit that currently exists. The applicant's also requesting two additional bar permits, an additional outdoor service permit, and dance and entertainment permits. It should be noted, this is separate from the next agenda item that you would be asked to consider, which is a special land use permit and a site plan review in the next agenda item. So these are separate and distinct from that. As you're aware, Michigan Liquor Control Commission no longer requires local approval of a transfer of an ownership of a liquor license. However, pursuant to state law, we are able to require the approval of a plan of operation, which is before you for your consideration. Lieutenant Carly Renaud is here today and is extremely familiar with that and has gone over that. It's my understanding the Police Department has worked with the applicant to amend that plan over the last, since it was submitted several weeks, two months ago, and has no objection to that. Appropriate resolutions are presented for your consideration if you are inclined to consider granting both the approval of the plan of operation and the dance and entertainment permit agreements between the city and the applicant. And I would defer to questions to Lieutenant if there are any particular questions, and I know the applicants are present.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Kocowski or Officer Renaud?
Commissioner Macy? I guess I'll ask what the changes are that have been talked about.
The changes from the original plan of operation that was submitted to the Planning Department. Initially, if you look at the drawing, there was an outdoor seating area that was going to basically butt up to the address there on Potter. So it was going to be to the west of that west building. That got changed. So he now, the applicant moved that outdoor seating to the south side of that west building instead of on the west side. So there will now be a building in between that outdoor seating and that residence there. In addition, the applicant also added the outdoor seating area that is adjacent to the lobby area. That was not initially in that first plan. With the addition of that, the applicant made the outdoor service area, number two on your map there, a little bit smaller, so you could now go in one entrance and circle around and out that same entrance. So there used to be two entrances into the parking lot there, and now there's only one entrance and exit.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for coming. Lieutenant, thank you for the report. Looking at it, I see there's an attachment that includes the call for services last year. I'm not seeing any noise complaints. Were there, is that included in a different report, or were there no noise complaints last year as a result of what they had going on?
On there, there should be four noise complaints. So two are actually listed as noise complaints and two are listed as loud parties.
But those were within, those were within the rooms themselves, right? Like tenants were in there.
Yeah, so not actually, I'm sorry, not actually in the outdoor service. They were within the rooms. So loud parties in the rooms or noise complaints coming from the rooms.
Okay, but as, you know, they had entertainment going on and on the premises, there were, so if there were a noise complaint, it would be within this report?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question about the calls for service. There are a number of calls that are here. Is this out of the ordinary for this type of establishment, the types of call and the number of calls?
Looking back, we only have one other hotel that I can compare it to, and it's similar. I believe last year, there was 20 calls for service at that one. So it's very similar in that sense. So, you know, we go out for unwanted people or trespassing complaints. There doesn't seem to be anything out of the ordinary except for the last call for service that's on there.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? We do have the petitioners here. Would you like to come up and provide us with some information?
Good evening, Mayor Potem, members of the City Commission. I'm Kelly Allen here tonight representing the applicant and just quickly introduce our team in case they need introductions. Dennis Cowan, zoning specialist, Jim Razer was our client, my associate, Chris Tower, Jeff Clapp is here, and John Kelvin, the general manager. I do want to thank Lieutenant. She worked with my legal assistant, who's a former MLCC investigator endlessly on this. I mean, to say that this plan of operation has been changed 10 times is an understatement. To say that the actual plans have been changed 25 times is an understatement. So this team has really come together to make the changes that we felt were necessary. I think, Commissioner Macy, you asked what else had been changed. There was also an outdoor service area on the east side of the building where the diner is supposed to be in the last phase. We removed that off 11 Mile after the comments from the Planning Board, or Planning Commission, rather, and I'm sure that Dennis will get into all of that, as well as thanking the planning staff. So the Hotel Royal Oak now was built in 1954. It went from excellent to good to bad to ugly until 2014, when Jim Razer bought this property. And he solely owns it since 2023, when he bought out his partners. I think it's really important to note the investment that is going into this property. He already had $1.4 billion into it, and this renovation's going to be another million dollars. This is not something that's being taken lightly or without significant cost to benefit everyone, not just the developer. You are familiar with Jim, I'm sure. He's a successful attorney. He is well-versed in local government. He has now become well-versed in MLCC law, so he's going to be up here instead of me from now on, I think, because he generally tells me what's right, and I have to talk him off a ledge. He has hired an excellent team, as you can see from here tonight, including the best architects with vast experience. He has a huge investment. He's going to phase this in, as set forth in Lieutenant's report, which I'm sure you have all read. And I really appreciate what the city attorney talked about in terms of the plan of operation, and there are a couple new faces here tonight, so just a real quick 101 on that. It used to be that the Liquor Control Commission would not consider any application, whether it was a new transfer, anything, without the city, in this case, the City Commission's approval. They changed, not the law, they just went to a strict interpretation of the law, and they sent out in like 2010, an omission to all municipalities saying, hey, you don't have anything to do with this unless it's a new license, a quota license, which the city of Royal Oak has not had in some time. Royal Oak was the first city to jump on this and develop what was called a plan of operation. The plan of operation has been mimicked and copied all across the state of Michigan. It has teeth in that if you violate the terms of your plan of operation, your ordinance says it is an ordinance violation, and ordinance violation is an MLCC violation, so your powers that be at the time connected all the dots to give the city as much possible control that they could have in enforcement. The plan of operation is Hotel Royal Oak's bible. Every time they have to think about anything, in addition to all the MLCC rules and regulations and city ordinances, of course, they go to that plan. And if it's not in the plan, they can't do it. If it's restricted in the plan, they can't do it. It is the bible. The outdoor service areas, I want to address briefly. I just, I want to say that part of the reason this has taken a long time and had so much work is because all of these outdoor areas are really going to be beautifully appointed. We're not slapping up, you know, a rail that's ugly. Anybody that knows anything about this architectural firm or about Mr. Razer for that matter knows that it's going to be nice. We're using trees. Hopefully, the trees, I don't know about oak trees, Commissioner, but we'll try. But the commission does require that all outdoor service areas be defined and clearly marked. They have to be surrounded by either fencing or shrubbery or something that is at least three feet. So we are complying with all of that. And we've also taken care to listen to what the neighbors have to say about these outdoor service areas, as well as the Planning Commission, which is why those plans were changed. The outdoor service areas are going to be right outside the lobby. That's the biggest change to this plan since we came before the Planning Commission. So you know where the concerts used to be in the center of the parking lot. There are actually two, because there's a like sort of retaining wall in the middle, there are two bars in the lobby area, which is going to be beautiful. And then right outside of the lobby area is where the main outdoor service area is going to be. And it is the plan to have the entertainment be in that portion of the building, no longer in the center. Very importantly, we are, there is going to be a bar in that outdoor service area, an actual physical bar, and no physical bar in the center area. So that means that waitstaff will have to transport alcohol, take an order from the center area, go to the lobby bar and bring it over. What we don't want, and Lieutenant walked it with my legal assistant probably a couple of times, what we don't want is people ordering and transporting their own alcohol across a parking lot area. So we were very careful to take care of that part of it. The sound issue is, again, in the plan of operation. I know there are concerns about this. I, you know, thank Commissioner Colo for bringing that up. All of the calls for service, there were four related sound complaints. There was nothing having to do with the concerts, nothing having to do with anything other than guest behavior, and there were only four of those in a year. And I guess while I'm on that, there were a couple of alcohol-related calls for service. Again, not necessarily intoxicated people, you know, boyfriend met a girlfriend, she's drunk, come get her type of thing. Not to take that lightly, but hotel rooms are not bars. So we don't have the ability as managers and owners to watch what is going on in a hotel room. That would not be good. So if something like that happens in a hotel room, sometimes the guests will call the police. But more importantly, Jim and John will always call the police. I've been doing this in the city for so embarrassingly long, and there were many days when bar owners and establishments would not feel comfortable calling the police, and why? Because that would be counted against them on a yearly basis when the police run came out. And I tried to convince every single client that is not the right thing to do, and clearly, Jim Razer knows that is not the right thing to do. If the police are needed, the police are called, period. With regards to the entertainment, another thing that the city of Royal Oak did first to do in the state of Michigan, or to develop these agreements that you have in place that work in conjunction with your plan of operation. So you have, if an establishment has a dance permit and/or an entertainment permit, the licensee is obligated to sign one of these agreements. I remember fighting with the chief back when over these agreements because I thought, well, these are so broad. But then we sort of came to an understanding that the Royal Police Department's not going to do anything to hinder an establishment unless they actually have to. The dance agreement actually says that if the chief of police feels that there are problems as a result of a dance floor, that that, that he says, okay, license is coming down or permit's coming down until we have a public hearing before the City Commission. City Commission then has the ability, after due process, to revoke that license. Never once has that happened since all of these years of this dance permit agreement. The entertainment permit agreement says that on transfer of the license, if Jim decides to sell this to someone and it has an entertainment permit with it, by state law, that can transfer to the next owner. Per your agreement, it cannot. So you, they have to turn it in, and the next guy has to start over and come back to you with a plan for the entertainment. So on that note, the places for entertainment are going to be, again, lobby bar, sometimes in that center area, and sometimes in the west building. The west building is a masonry, it's a brick building, so sound should not be an issue there, and any entertainment or dance would go on in there. The dance floor that we actually mapped out for Lieutenant is in that west building. So if there would be dancing, that's not, remember that he hasn't done this yet, so it's going to be sort of on customer demand. And the real reason for that west building is to provide the city of Royal Oak with another place to gather, whether it's. whether it's, you know, full-time, part-time events, that kind of thing. Because, let's face it, there's probably, there's a shortage of that in the city. The biggest thing with any kind of liquor license matter that we handle is safety. Safety first. And so Jim and John have decided that every single employee be trained before their first shift in selling or serving alcohol. They are not allowed to work at the Hotel Royal Oak until they are certified by what we call TIPS or TAMS. Jim and John are certified. And that's important. And they have a written policy that's going to say, if your certification lapses, you lapse. Their policy's going to say, if you sell to a minor or to an intoxicated person, guess what, you're terminated. Because that is not only important to the community and the welfare of the general public, but important to their survival. You get a couple of violations like that, and you're in trouble with the LCC as well as with the police department. These guys are hands-on managers. Jim's right here. John's office is in the building. So they're not absentee owners. They're not people that aren't there watching what's going on at all times. Excellent relationship with the PD, which I mentioned. And also, Lieutenant Renaud, who always does her job, spoke with the fire departments, all the other departments. I wonder how many times this matter's been a topic of the departmental meetings. And the fire department was okay after Jim made some changes, I think, and Jeff. And she also contacted the MLCC investigator, which she always does in these matters, and MLCC investigator was good to go. There are a couple of questions that arose at the Planning Commission meeting that I want to address here. One was sort of an Ellison thing, Planning Commissioner Ellison thing. And he wanted to know, what is the ramification of actually having liquor license at the Hotel Royal Oak? So here's the deal. If you have a liquor license, wish, they need to stay competitive, to offer the community, you know, full benefits, and to be like most other hotels or motels, whatever you want to call them, in the city or in the state, they need this liquor license. And it's at a great expense. I mean, if he wasn't going to be able to offer this full service to the community, he wouldn't be spending this kind of money. But what happens? No outside liquor is allowed. You cannot go to 7-Eleven and go and sit on the lawn. You cannot go to 7-Eleven and go to any of the common areas, including the lobby, including the lobby bar. The only place that you can have your own alcohol is in your hotel room. And this was a Commissioner Douglas question at the Planning Commission. What happens in a hotel room? That is, it's like a VBRO. It's like your home. You paid for it, it's yours. You can do, within reason, without getting the police involved, what you wish in your hotel room, including drinking alcohol that has been purchased off-site. It's legal. That's not our hope. We have what's called an SDM license here, which is a beer and wine-to-go license for a couple of reasons. We are hopeful that, first of all, they're going to offer some nice things, you know, nice products there. So, you know, we're hopeful that hotel guests will purchase their alcohol in the lobby area and take it to their rooms. There's also going to be nice wines, cocktails, things like that. You may wonder why we licensed or called outdoor service areas along where the rooms are. That's so that legally, customers can traverse those areas. So they can purchase a craft cocktail or a glass of wine or a glass of beer and walk, because it'll all be, you know, marked off to their room without having any issues with the liquor commission. So with that, and I'm sure that you, or I'm not sure, but you may have questions, and Dennis will take it from here, but for my part, we are asking that you approve the suggested resolution from the city attorney.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Allen, Commissioner Cola?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. Ms. Allen, thanks for being here tonight. So just that last item that you just said on, the outdoor service areas and how customers can walk around. Do they order from, let's say, the lobby bar and then walk the path and then walk themselves over to outdoor service area two, which is that green space in the middle?
Nope.
Okay. So, but they could walk the red path on the diner?
Yes.
They could walk the red path basically from the lobby back to their room?
Correct. And to that point, we're going to have signage. The commission's really big on that. We have to have, you know, tasteful signs that say, no alcohol beyond this point. So if you're in the center there, you can't leave the center. You have to keep your alcohol in there.
Okay. But then, in outdoor service area, it looks like number two and then number four, perhaps, they can drink in those green spaces if a server brings them?
Correct.
Beer-wise?
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Following up on that, Ms. Allen, the proposal, the documents talk about the ability of guests to sit outside their room and enjoy alcoholic beverages. Who is going to police what they're drinking and where they got it if they brought it from outside, were able to consume it legally in their room, but now want to take it out to the balcony and sit in a chair? And I realize that's the challenge to the owners here, but how does, I mean, who polices that and who's going to, who will determine where that alcohol came from?
Well, the owners will and the management will, and here's how. They're going to know what they have in stock, and they're going to know what they are selling out of their lobby bar. And, you know, this is going to be a lot more labor-intensive for them. So there will be people that are, if people are, and that's exactly why we did that, is so people could sit right outside of their room and, as well as walk from the lobby bar. So if somebody's example, sitting there drinking, you know, in the day we used to call it G.I.Q., I think, Bud Light, and that's not even remotely something that would be sold in the lobby bar, it's going to be obvious. You know, I think it's going to take some training on the part of, or getting used to on the part of guests, but not on the part of staff. They're going to know, and they're going to look. They're going to check the best they can.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Macy?
Sounds like this place may be too highbrow for me. I don't know. So, following up again on the outdoor service area two, it sort of seems impossible to, I mean, it's kind of right in the middle, and they can't walk it in or walk it out. Is there going to be a sign every foot? I mean, I just, I'm really confused as to how that, like, the rest of it, I sort of see how it's separated, but the outdoor service area two seems like an island that people are definitely going to walk to and from with their drinks.
Well, remember that outdoor service area has some time clearly marked and fully enclosed. So there are going to be planters all around that mid-area, and the idea is that people can't just walk in and out. There's going to be spaces where you obviously have to be able to walk in and out, and there will be signage. And that is the whole idea behind moving the whole game plan over to in front of the lobby area. I mean, I understand that this is not what people are used to. It's not what the owners used to, but this is their vision, and this is going to be better than what everyone is used to. So that's on us. That's in the plan of operation. That's MLCC code. You know, the police didn't really have an occasion to come, let's put it this way, to Hotel Royal Oak for any of those outdoor concerts. There was no reason. Everybody was cool. Everything was fine. This is now going to be a licensed establishment, and like every other licensed establishment in the city, the police are going to be making their runs. And if they see that this stuff is happening, guess what? That's a violation of your plan of operation. So it's going to be a lot of work for these folks, and they understand that, and they're up to it. You know, their investment depends on it.
Okay, thank you. And then one more question. So it looks like 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM is the service time. So I know that, like, a lot of this is to be competitive with other hotels. I feel like a lot of other hotels that I have visited don't serve between 11:00 AM and probably 7:00 PM or something like that. So why the kind of all-day service?
Okay, well, that is the outside hours of operation. It is going to sort of depend on what the demand is from their customers, but those are the legal hours, and so we did not want to, you know, put ourselves in a box on that. You know, it sort of depends on what's going on around town. But also, if you're in a hotel, the lobby bar is very important, because people that check in late or are up late or for whatever reason, and it's going to be nice, and, you know, people can come from their rooms, and that lobby bar will be open at those hours. And as far as 11 o'clock in the morning pertains, you know, that's for, we don't have food yet, you know, but we are, as you could see in the plan, we're going to be working with local establishments to have menus in the lobby and work with people to, here's numbers, and so people will deliver and that kind of thing until they get their east building built. But we do think that those hours will be used.
Thank you. Commissioner Cola?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. So actually, one question about that food in the east building. You talked about how this is, you know, the bible, what they go by, which is right. The current menu, I'm sorry, the current plan of operation does state that the menu is takeout, no food provided besides some light snacks. Once the east building's built, would an amended plan be presented?
Yes.
To the police that includes the items that they're serving?
And we're going to have to have the kitchen, right, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. I understand that all of the employees are going to have TIPS or TAMS training. Does the plan of operation also include regular training beyond that one-time training and recertification for the TIPS?
It does not. Your template plan does not call for that. We have no problem with that. We have no problem with-
Including additional-
Yep.
Or regular-
No problem.
Updates and training. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? All right. We do have the petitioners here. Do you have anything that you'd like to add, Commissioner?
Mayor Proton, I'm sorry, I should have said this at the beginning of the discussion and before the petitioners come up. The manager of the hotel, Mr. Kelvin, is my personal fitness trainer. I, we do not have, I receive no pecuniary benefits from that. All I get from him is pain, and I'm confident that I can judge this proposal on its merits without consideration of our relationship.
So the great gains that he's giving you in muscle will not persuade you of one way or another?
[laughing]
Thank you for that disclosure, Commissioner Douglas. All right. Would the petitioners like to come up to provide any additional information?
Not at this time. We're certainly able to answer any questions. I'm kind of handling the site plan with special abuse aspect, so.
I have questions.
Well, the commission does have questions for the petitioners. So if you'd like to come up.
Or if Ms. Allen would like to return, but it seemed more relevant to the petitioners.
Okay.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Razor, as Commissioner Macy pointed out, your plan of operation just says your hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM. How do you envision the west building operating? You haven't set any parameters on what its hours are going to be, how it's going to be marketed, who's going to attend. Can you expand more on your intentions for that building?
Certainly, I'd love to. It's an interesting building. It's the oldest building on the campus. It predates all the photos from before the hotel is built in the early '50s. It looks like it was used at sometime for garage. It's cinder block construction. It's got a wood roof. It's interesting, and it's been vacant. I see that, and it's a very small building. It's about the size of my garage. It's a three-car garage. So it's not a big place. It's not fit that. To that building, we're adding an addition, which is only 400 square feet, and that's the only addition to the entire campus. So that is expressly for handicap restrooms to serve that facility. Because in the '50s, Mr. Jones didn't build any handicap restrooms in this facility, because that wasn't, you know, what you did in the '50s. So we're pretty happy that we're going to have restrooms open to the public that are handicap accessible. And there'll also be restrooms on the east wing by the diner that are handicap accessible. So this building I see as a very intimate, speakeasy kind of building. We're not planning on having a disco. It's not a nightclub. It's going to be available for rent for community events, fundraisers, any community organization that wants to use it. We think the guests will especially like it. It's a good size for us to have available in the campus, because the lobby bar is so darn small. The lobby bar and the lobby together are 600 square feet. So if you want, like, tonight would be a good night that people would want to come watch the game, which Michigan is leading by 14 to 3 right now. Unless they score again.
17-3.
17-3 right now. I went to State, but the kids went to Michigan, so I kind of, you know, yeah, go white. So, in any event, it's not a big space. We're never going to have a band perform in that space. It's too darn small for that. You might have an acoustic guitar in that space for ambient music. If you've been to Shift in Birmingham, it's about that size. So it's a small venue. The building itself is built like a bomb shelter. It's a concrete block. Inside of that, we'll have to do insulation and drywall at least to get up to the R-value that we're supposed to be at. And we reconfigured everything to come to the south of that building. The doors to that building are traditional commercial doors that open and then close. We did a small balcony, or not a balcony, but like a patio in front of that. We added an exit onto Potter, because fire wanted to be able to get at people in the building, even if there's folks in the parking lot, which we're happy to have. I think it's going to be a very local place. I think most of the folks that are going to be in that place are, people are going to walk to it. I don't think it's going to be a huge deal.
Hours of operation? I mean, if you're operating a public establishment, you need to have some sort of regular hours, so customers know when to come.
Right. As Kelly explained, we don't want to box ourselves in by saying, you know, oh, we're only going to do this from like 4:00 to 8:00, or whatever. The legal hours of operation for a liquor license are 11:00 to 2:00 in the morning.
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM to 2:00 in the morning. And I'm not going to be the next Kelly Allen, because she's a specialist with this and I'm not. I don't think that there's ever going to be a time where that bar needs to be open until 2:00. But there might be a special event that somebody wants it until then. I can't really forecast, so I'm building in some flexibility. Obviously, it's a business, so if there's demand, we're going to go with the demand. But I cannot imagine that we're going to be over-open on that building until 2:00. It just, I wouldn't see that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And we can have some flexibility with that, certainly during the week, because there's no way that that place is going to be open until 2:00 in the morning during the week. There's just, nobody's going to staff that, and there's not going to be the demand.
Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. Razor.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
In the materials, it is listed as a bar and event space. Is this a space that you would rent out for particular events or specific events, outside of running it as a bar?
Definitely a space that we can say is rented out for an event and not have it open to the public.
Okay.
And I think that's an important component of it. I would hesitate, though, to just call it just special event space. I don't think there's a financial model that allows us to do that, to just have it for events. But I can tell you that there's a lot of demand in the city for folks that want to have a gathering of about that size, because this is a place that seats 40, whereas the lobby bar, I think, seats 25. So this might be a spot that folks for a wedding shower, or folks want to join for, you know, unfortunately, funeral luncheons or things that there's a demand for. So it's a space that we can always take off inventory to be open to the public when folks want to do something there. And we think that's a great thing. It's also something that Hyatt has that we do not have, is any sort of meeting space. And again, if I could go back to 1954 and tell Ben Jones that we need some meeting space and some group space, I would, but I can't. So I'm taking this old building and giving it an adaptive reuse as a cool place where we can all gather.
Thank you. Commissioner Cola?
Thank you, Madam Mayor Proton. Mr. Razor, thanks for coming out tonight. Another question around how, just kind of use the space. I know you're still figuring out the concept of the food and what you want to have. How do you imagine service going? And what I'm asking is, are you only serving out of that east building and then delivering it somehow to the other bars that you have on the premise?
Great question. I had a long meeting about that today. So the example I'd use is Townhouse, which in Birmingham, that actually has its kitchen in a whole other building down the street. They figured out how to package the food, keep it fresh, and get it to the bar. So the only space that we have on the campus to do a commercial kitchen is in that vacant east wing, which is the original building. We haven't ever used it as a hotel room, because you have to actually straddle the toilet to use the sink, and it's a little weird. Maybe people were built differently in the '50s. We don't know. But it's a- know. But it's a single-floor building. It's on the edge of the campus. It's great to convert to a kitchen. So that food is gonna get run to the west bar, to the lobby bar, to the deck, into the rooms. And in terms of food, so John and I, John Calvin, my partner of 10 years, who's the general manager of the hotel and inflicts pain on Shar on a regular basis when he's not busy with the hotel. And I have spent a ton of time talking food. What sort of food it's gonna be like, what it's gonna be. And what I can tell you is, Commissioner Macy, I don't wanna make it too upscale because I want you to come, but it's gonna be good. We wanna have great food. We wanna have a really good food game. And that ties into what business travelers want. Business travelers want a cocktail or a beer and good food when they get done with work. And we are very uncompetitive in that segment. We still have a lot of penetration in that segment, but we need to be more competitive with that. And to be competitive to that, that's an amenity that we have to provide. And although we want members of the public to come, certainly, all of this is driven by hotel needs and hotel amenities that we need to have to be competitive. And all of this is driven by our desire to move this property upscale, which is a pretty amazing story considering that this was the low-browest place that you could possibly get. And included in our spend for this is new mattresses, upgraded luxury linens, just a better infotainment system in the rooms with Apple TV, just a lot of really good upgrades to keep pace with the technology and the comfort level that travelers to Royal Oak expect.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions for Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, so I'm just asking questions on the other end of the time. I feel like I'm, you know, the 2:00 a.m., I can see that sometimes you wanna be, you don't wanna have to worry about an event going late. But do you foresee serving during the day between 11:00 and 5:00? And I, and if, if that is something you're kind of looking for, are towards, are you, is there gonna be like some hiring? I assume that, I mean, this is suddenly a much bigger operation than, it's not John by himself, I'm sure.
He's pretty capable, but I don't know about that. As a matter of fact, I should introduce Marty Cardamone in the audience, who's one of our folks that's come today. He lives just on a side street, rides his bike to work. No, we're gonna have to hire, we're gonna have to create quite a few jobs with this, which I think is great. And we've really enjoyed staffing up the hotel for the upcoming season because we're doing blockbuster numbers. To talk about drinks, yeah. The, so the lounge in the front, the lobby lounge, is gonna be like a coffee house with alcohol. So we're expecting that we're gonna do a great game with pastries and other baked goods. And we certainly wanna have an opportunity to serve a great cappuccino, but also serve a mimosa. And people like that for brunch, especially on Sunday. So, you know, if you're gonna go out and you're gonna get some delicious food from us and you're gonna have a cappuccino, maybe you wanna stay and you wanna have a mimosa. Maybe you want a Bloody Mary. I, you know, I'm thinking that 11:00 is a good cutoff for that. I don't wanna be gasoline and start at 7:00, Kelly?
7:00 morning.
Yeah, gasoline starts at 7:00. I don't think any hotel guests are gonna want an eye-opener. But I think 11:00 is a, is a good choice for people that are vacationing. And, you know, Commissioner, let me tell you, the number of people that come to us on vacation from all over the state to explore Royal Oak and ask John and Marty and the other folks at the front desk, what's cool in Royal Oak? What are the best places to go in Royal Oak? We have a bunch of partnerships with downtown businesses, with Luigi, with the Royal Oak Brewery, with Alchemy, with other folks that our guests can get some love, get, you know, free dessert or free appetizers. And we have so much good stuff in Royal Oak. And we bring 15,000 people a year, on the average, to Royal Oak that wanna explore this town because they think it's so darned cool. And it makes me really happy because I know that I think this town is really cool. I know you folks all volunteer your time to, to be promoters of this town. And it's really refreshing to sit out by a fireplace and talk to folks that came here because they think Royal Oak is so darned cool and they wanna be part of the fun. Long answer, short question, sorry.
We're expecting anything else.
Commissioner.
I just have a quick question about the West Building because you mentioned that you could host events there. So I would imagine some of these events are going to have food involved. You mentioned that there's gonna be an ADA bathroom. Will there also be like a sink and a basic food prep area for, to support catering?
The back bar of that is where we've located the water and the, that was a process. And there's great video of the water, folks turning on the tap outside and finding out which one of the pipes on the floor was actually the water of the place. That's in the back part of it. So there'll be probably for space concerns, a dishwasher in there instead of a three-banger sink, there'll be a hand wash sink. I don't think that we're gonna prepare any food, at least any, any significant food. There might be a turbo chef oven in that for something fast, but I think the vast majority is gonna be prepared on the East Coast. And we certainly don't want, do wanna have the ability to work with other businesses in Royal Oak if we have an event that, you know, would require, like if somebody wants to do Luigi's or Alchemy for their event, we'd certainly be, you know, very happy to partner with our partners to do that.
Yeah, I think largely what I was looking for was a hand washing station because even if you're bringing food over, you know, setting it up and you wanna make sure that that's safe for the people consuming. And I just also wanted to comment that I appreciate the bike rack that you've included. I'm hoping that we'll find a mid-century style bicycle rack for, to go along with the mid-century theme. I don't know if they existed back then, but-
So we have a really cool, kinda modern, wiggly one that's in the back right now that we're gonna move up to the front because what we found-
That's why it's relocated?
Yeah, it's, tons of people ride their bikes, have ridden their bikes to come to bands on the weekend. And we really wanna encourage that. So we need to move that up front. And we have house bikes that people can use as well. So I think we need a bigger bike rack.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Razor?
Thank you for allowing me to answer your questions.
So I think we will now open up the public comment.
Public hearing?
Public hearing, I'm sorry. We already have public comment. So if anyone is here to speak about this current agenda item, again, you have three minutes tops to speak on this matter. And I will start with you. Yes.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Diva Arum, and I'm actually a neighbor of this property, about six blocks away, so I'm not an immediate neighbor. I've had the opportunity to attend the weekly concerts there. And as such, I've had a chance to kinda watch security, watch the team, watch how they operate, how crowds are handled. I should start by saying that I'm a retired saleswoman. I spent my life on the road, working events. So I'm used to watching security and seeing how things go on. I have seen nothing but professionalism in how things have been handled on that property. I've noticed the security is very proactive. Both the owners are out there constantly monitoring that things are kept quiet, definitely not an absentee ownership situation. The music promptly has been turned off at 10 o'clock, and those of us who remain are politely reminded to be considerate to the neighbors. And I've seen this consistently now over, over three years that I know of. So I believe in that old saying, the best predictor of future behavior is looking at the past history, looking at this property. Did anybody live here in the 70s? Anybody? Okay, so those of us that were back here in the 70s, we remember what that property was like. I graduated from Donidero High School back in 1979, and I can remember walking past that property. And it was kinda scary. I actually went for alternative routes because there would be needles out there, there were robberies that took place in the neighborhoods. I can remember in the 90s, driving past there and wondering if I needed to relocate my parents because it was becoming very seedy. I think that that hotel being turned around is a positive impact to all of us that live in that area. And I think that his success only benefits those of us who live nearby. I don't mind a little extra noise. I'm very appreciative of all that they've done in the community. And I just wanna publicly say thank you. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Hi there. My name is Kate Pierce. I'm at a 7-Eleven Fernwood. When I moved to Michigan 20 years ago, I moved from Seattle, so go Dogs, sorry watching that game as well. I chose Royal Oak because of its unique position in offering independent, small businesses, restaurants, bars, and shops. I didn't want chain restaurants and box stores. I wanted unique, individual experiences. And Royal Oak has always provided that. And I think that the Hotel Royal Oak is a prime example of the types of businesses that we have supported in this city for years and want to continue to support. But when I moved here, my family and friends are all from out of town, there was no place for them to come and stay. I think we've all heard now the stories of the four hotels that we did have as options, what my family would call the no-tel motels. And those have all gone away, thankfully. But what we were left with was blight on 11 Mile in prime view of everyone. And when the visitors were Royal Oak, then we're forced to leave the city. I had to send everybody to Madison Heights or Troy or Birmingham. And they took their entertainment dollars, their restaurant dollars, their evening dollars. All of that revenue left the city and was left in an old depleted building sitting on 11 Mile in plain view for everyone. Boutique Hospitality saw an old building blight in Royal Oak and recognized the need that this city has and the potential to build not only a business, but a place for our community to gather. In return, Jim and John have given this city what it needs to sustain itself. Its long-term growth plan, its revenues and tax dollars for the city, but also that vibrancy that is so much a part of our history. It's an extension of Royal Oak's Entertainment District that takes our very successful businesses beyond Maine and Washington and extends them down the 11 Mile corridor. The continued growth of our revenue base for this city and also for our businesses depends on Royal Oak's support. And not just our support verbally, but also actions that continue to help these businesses thrive and succeed. It is what not only will continue to create and maintain a great city, but it will also become and continue to be the place where small business owners want to establish their businesses because they know the city commission and its residents will support them and help them grow and encourage them to be part of this community. So I want to thank Jim and John for all that they've continued to believe for this city. It's, again, one of the reasons why I live here. It's a reason why I have brought my coworkers from Ford Motor Company to come and live in this city because we love what it represents. And thank you to the hospitality group and to the Royal Oak Hotel for continuing to maintain that for us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Ms. Oliver?
Good evening. Of particular concern regarding the Hotel Royal Oak proposal are the 27 police calls for service over the last year, including prostitution, trespassing, and drunken parties. These calls for Royal Oak, Hotel Royal Oak's address, they don't reflect calls from addresses of the surrounding neighbors who called to complain about Hotel Royal Oak. The most recent reported instance of prostitution is not clearly emphasized in the memorandum in tonight's agenda. More importantly, it appears that none of this police-reported information was available to the public or to the planning commission members at the public hearing conducted by the planning commission. Because of this, concerned citizens took it on themselves to inform the public by handing out flyers. The plan of operation presented appears to be inadequate to address prostitution. Also, I believe tonight, we compared, or the police officers presented information about a comparable hotel that had 20 service calls from police. However, that is a significant increase of 35%. And it wasn't stated whether or not that hotel served alcohol. The assumption is that it did not. Because of all of this, this whole process should start over and the matter be sent back to the planning commission to conduct a proper public hearing with proper notice to everyone in the surrounding neighborhoods. In addition, all political contributions made to decision-makers on either planning or city commissions from anyone on Hotel Royal Oak's team should be disclosed in writing for the public to review before the public hearing. No matter what, it's clear that no other city would ever approve a project like this so close to residential properties. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver. Is there any other comments for the public hearing?
Yes.
Hi, my name is John Kalinsky. I live at 112 North Alexander Avenue. I'm concerned that this project will harm my quality of life. I moved here two years ago. I live right at Alexander and 11 Mile. I moved here because the neighborhood seemed to offer easy access to downtown without the downsides of actually being downtown. I think this project will change that. My bedroom overlooks the property. It's less than 100 yards away. This project has inadequate parking, so I can look forward to more traffic on my street. Since the property will now serve alcohol until late at night, I can look forward to drunk people arguing in front of my house at 2:00 a.m. But my biggest concern is the music. I used to live in Ann Arbor on the same block as a nightclub. Every Friday and Saturday night, the music would shake my apartment until 2:00 a.m. I moved to my current house to avoid exactly that situation. Even the police analysis acknowledges that there will be more noise issues at the location. The planning division document says that the city does not want to change the essential character of a neighborhood. I don't see how opening an entertainment venue in a neighborhood that currently does not have one can do anything but change the character of that neighborhood. I ask the city to deny the property any permits which would bring noise and disturbance to my neighborhood. Also, the developer gives lots of vague assurances about what he wants to do, but I can only look at what the proposal allows him to do. Based on that, my assumption has to be that there will be loud entertainment until 2:00 a.m. every day. I do not want that for my neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for a public hearing?
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Eric Liu. I've been a resident of Royal Oak since 89. I'm a graduate of Donideros in 98, currently a journeyman car holder at Local I-38 Downtown Detroit. So I appreciate the music. I work downtown in the music venues such as Little Caesar's Arena. Downtown Detroit, they also have a problem with parking around their neighborhoods thanks to Little Caesar's. I can only see this happening to our neighborhood as well. So throughout the years, I've seen many changes, ups and downs of Royal Oak. 89, downtown Royal Oak was desolate. Fast forward 10 years later, Royal Oak was booming, lots of restaurants and bars. Until today, the whole dynamic has changed, from New City Hall to different luxury laws taking over and the new medical offices. The busy traffic of yesterday has many reasons. So I live across the street from this updated motel and two have seen the changes within a few blocks radius. In my opinion, this liquor store draws plenty of traffic daily, and the alcohol is already easily accessible for the patrons of such a motel. Being a neighbor of this liquor store, I see many empty vodka bottles laying on the grass on the corner of 11 and Alexander, mainly in the summertime. This goes on for years and has not stopped as of yet. And as close as we are downtown Royal, there's a random risk of drunken people who could mistake in their house to try to enter in others. This incident has happened to our house before. I came home from work and I saw my dad outside wrestling with a, with a bigger guy. Luckily, the cops were there. And luckily, my dad was tough. He fought the guy from entering the house, but he suffered a little cut on his arms. And then the past years, with the outdoor music across the lawn, it's pretty loud, if I can hear the louds pretty clearly. And that interrupts anything I have in my backyard if I have guests over in the summertime. I also have to bring up the issue of more rats than other stabs we can attract. The grill and young Chinese hungry rallies is plenty for our little area. Also, parking issue of the neighborhood, the streets being packed, that the locals' residents would have trouble being back, getting back. I've had my garage blocked by cars before, however, that was St. Patrick's Day. And these little street, little strip malls, parking lots are, will be the first before filled up. Do we really need parking enforcement in the neighborhoods? And I ask you, what value does this, does bring to our property besides- And I ask you, what value does this bring to our property besides entertainment for non-residents? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Kowalski?
I've already pretty much said what I wanted to say, but after hearing, when people have to live it and not dance it, two big differences. You can come there for fun and act well, and I'm glad the staff is trying to make sure their patrons are that way. But reality is, people don't follow rules. So, on that night that Mom's trying to put her baby to bed, or you're trying to get in your car or find a parking space, and someone drunk is coming in front of your property, the staff can't patrol the neighborhoods? Now, are the police going to do that? I don't know if we have enough staff. So, basically, I'm asking you again, like I said prior to this, I hope the city doesn't vote because they're just in favor of entertainment, or that they're a friend of the owner, or just because it's fun, that's good. Fun is great. But I hope they vote for the residents' reality first, and then the fun. That's being a good neighbor also, a good business owner, and a kind, caring humanitarian. So, basically, I guess what I want to say is, for the people that it will impact, a woman over here said she's great. She's on six blocks away. Does she live directly behind? So, while the hotel owner is working with the neighbors, and I know that that is what you should do, please remember that there are going to be nights, that this is not going to work. And when they don't work, don't wait, and address it immediately and change it. Because you can never replace the well-being of where you live if it's too late. If you've already told someone they have carte blanche, you can't change it unless you, the commission, says no more. It's up to you, because, like I said, you can't change your well-being, but you can always go somewhere else for fun. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sergeant Dennis Cowan, 2716 Trafford. I forgot to submit these to you earlier. They are letters of support, and most importantly, because someone just brought up the issue of people who live in a neighborhood. There is a letter right on top, signed by five of the seven homeowners and an additional person who lives on Potter very close, that is in support of this project. Mr. Razor and our team have had a dialogue with these neighbors. They live in Stanley Court, which is a newer subdivision that was built directly behind this hotel after Mr. Razor and his owners took over, new owners. And I would say they are the most directly affected, and we have an agreement on different things we're going to do that they have requested. And so, we think that's very important for you to know. So, if I could give these to the
To Matt Clark.
Our great city clerk, and if she could distribute them so that you are aware of the support from not only people in Royal Oak, but people who are immediately affected.
Thank you. Are there any other comments for public hearing? Going once, going twice? Okay. I need to bring it back on this side of the table. I do have one more question for Lieutenant Renaud. So, there was a comment regarding the, what appears to be the latest incident or call from our for-service at the hotel regarding prostitution. Was that call, if you're familiar with that call at all, is that anything that would be out of the ordinary with any other type of establishment in this area? I understand that you indicated there's only one comparable, but we do have other hotels in the city, which this doesn't appear to be an alcohol-related call or a noise-related call. It's, you know, some other activity which could happen in any other establishment?
I guess I don't understand what your initial question is.
What I'm saying is that this isn't unique to this particular area, or have you heard of any other type situation within the city?
So, this is the only time I've run these calls for this establishment. I only run calls for service for any liquor license establishment, or anybody applying for a liquor license.
Okay.
So, the other hotel does have a liquor license. That's how I know how many calls for service. This was only run for this last year. I don't know if this is a common occurrence or not, but it did occur within this last year. That's why it's on this call for service.
Okay. All right. That's fair. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Did anyone else have any questions? Yes, Commissioner Macy?
Is it too late to ask a question of the petitioners?
Are the petitioners willing to answer a question? You can come up.
If you'd like.
Yes, you can come up.
Well, you know, I just wanted to say that
This isn't my question. Now, you're just talking.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought it was the Commissioner Macy. Excuse me. I talk for a living.
Don't we know it? So, the question I have was, parking was brought up, and I know it's in the proposal, but I was wondering if you could speak about parking a little bit?
Sure. I'd love to. So, what we've done is the creation of the circle drive gives us the ability to have a dedicated valet lane, which we didn't have before. And the stacking for that lane is around the entire circle. And I really like that because we're going to have to have a great valet game, I suspect, on Friday and Saturday night. Only so we have Village Grill, our lovely neighbor next door, and Dora and Fabio are fine with us using their lot. That'll do about 32 cars. Then, we have Wilson owns the strip mall across the street, and he's fine with us parking cars there, and cars have parked there for the last three years. The benefit of our location is, is like, all the commercial businesses are closed when we're at our very busiest on Friday and Saturday nights. So, we retain the valet company that does hotel parking. They do it downtown. They're experts at locating and getting licenses for parking lots. So, we're very hopeful that that valet will take care of any issues we have with folks that drive. The other thing is, is that, as Dennis will tell you, and I know I'm going to steal your thunder, is if a hotel guest leaves their room and walks down to the lounge, they're counted twice by our zoning ordinance. So, we don't really feel like there's going to be that much of a parking issue, except when we have valet. So, we think that that will be a good solution. And perhaps at some point in time in the future, we'll have a valet lane on 11 Mile and/or parking on 11 Mile in a road diet, which will definitely help us as well. Because one of the things about 11 Mile is, is that traditionally, it's been difficult unless you do valet, or unless you have a big parking lot like us.
Thank you. You mentioned that you'd be working with businesses that are closed in the area for their parking. Will you be getting licensing agreements or any sort of contract with them rather than just, you know, verbal agreement to utilize their space?
Yeah. So, Dora sent us an email indicating that, and I suppose we could get a license agreement from her. But according to the valet company that's in the business of doing this, when you approach somebody whose lot is empty at that point in time, and you're like, hey, I'll give you a couple of dollars, they're very happy to do that. And what we have on 11 Mile is a sea of surface parking that's not used on Friday or Saturday night. So, yeah, we could get license agreements, but I don't think it's going to be difficult to obtain the parking that we need at any time. And hopefully, more folks will ride bicycles and walk, which will certainly be helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Kolo?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So, just along the lines of that, could we amend the plan of operation then to include the willingness to secure a licensing agreement for parking?
For parking?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
Yeah, I think a licensing agreement would be helpful
Okay.
for that.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Clarification, Mr. Greg Kowalski. Would that be part of the, yeah,
If I may.
the plan of operation, or the special land use?
You know, plan of operation really focuses on the LCC types of activities and related to the liquor license. As I indicated previously, you are going to be looking at a specialty land use permit and site plan, which you are free to adopt any reasonable conditions you see appropriate, and attach those conditions to those. I don't have a problem if you want to put it in the plan of operation, but it's probably more appropriate, from my perspective, to put it as a condition of the special land use permit or site plan approval process. That would be the more logical place for such a request.
Mr. Kowalski?
Thank you, Ms. Hunt. I looked over at plan of operations. I noticed, you know, they say employees will park in the farmer's market. The other hotel in town plan of operation says that people will park in the parking structure behind it. Nothing else that says that their hours of service are 6:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. So, I guess I'll defer to the trend of that, but that's why I had suggested in the plan of operation.
Hi, it has 6:00 a.m. That's an eye-opener.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Okay. Thank you. All right. You may.
I just kind of wanted to refer back to something that was stated in public comments, because my understanding was that the list of calls would include any calls that were made regardless of where they were made from related to this property. Is that correct?
So, the ways that calls for service, it doesn't matter if it was made from there. It's any call that had that address in it. So, whether a resident called, if you were passing by and called, it's any call for service associated with that, not just if you called from that hotel.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So, we have a resolution that's before us. Does anyone have any comment, any like to make a motion? Commissioner Kolo?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I move approval of the plan of operation.
There's a motion on the table. There's a second by Commissioner Macy. Any discussion? Commissioner Kolo?
Thank you, Mayor Mayor Protem. Did I get it right? Are you signaling that to me something?
Right.
I move approval of the resolutions presented to us, I guess I should say.
If I may clarify, so there's two technically resolutions that were presented. As one, it's the plan of operation, and the other part of that resolution is the proposed dance and entertainment permit agreements. If Commissioner Kolo wants to make them one at a time, that's fine. If he wanted to make, I just wanted to clarify, there are two components, and it's your prerogative as the motion maker to decide if you want to do two separate or one singular.
If it's okay, Commissioner Macy.
Commissioner Macy, you second as one
I understood you meant all of this.
Yes.
Yeah. You're like a special thing.
What that is.
Just making sure.
Yeah.
Kolo made a motion for both, and Macy second.
Motion's on the table.
Yeah.
For the plan of operation?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, as to discussion on it, Mayor Protem, I think, you know, we've heard a lot today about different aspects of the operation of the hotel. Right now, we're only looking at the liquor license and the plan of operation that goes with it. The site plan does come next. I don't have questions about that. But I think it's reasonable and the course of business for a hotel operation to be able to serve alcohol, to serve food. And I don't think that this is a drastic change to the normal course of business that you would expect to see at a hotel. So, because of that, and because, you know, we have a well-written agreement here that really covers a lot of what we're looking for, I think it's fair to move forward with this tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you. I live like two blocks from this place. I go to the summer concerts. I walk by there on my way to lunch at the Village Grill on a regular basis. They've done a really marvelous job with it, with the renovation. I love the fact that it's locally owned. All that money stays here in Royal Oak. It doesn't go off to some national chain. I think their management has been exemplary. And I do understand the need to serve business travelers or other travelers with alcohol. And so, I'm fine with the lobby bar, with the outdoor seating areas. However, I don't see how running a bar in a separate building on the west side of the establishment contributes to the successful operations of the hotel. It's a separate bar, a neighborhood bar perhaps. So, I would consider modifying the plan of operation to limit that building's use to private events and not have it open for public hours. But I think Royal Oak has plenty of places to gather, and I just don't think that's necessary.
So, that is not a modification?
If anybody else agrees, I might introduce a motion to modify the
Existing motion. Lots. Commissioner Macy?
I guess I want to hear more about what your concern is. Your concern is, so there's already going to be a liquor license. If we approve a liquor license on that spot, you just think having that additional spot is
It's a bar. I mean, there's a hotel with liquor service for guests of the hotel, and then there's this separate bar open for public hours right up against the house behind it. I just, I don't see how this extra bar is consistent with the hotel that the liquor license is servicing.
Commissioner Kolo?
Thank you. I guess I kind of question that also because it's, the building's there no matter what, right? The space that's there, it's a cement block wall existing. There's space behind it, some green space, and then a new fence going up. I don't see what difference it is what's inside that space at any given time. I don't, I see this being used by patrons of the hotel, you know, parking inside the hotel wherever they may park or walk to get there. But I don't see this being a jamming nightclub, so to say, as much as, I just don't see the economics of that happening as much as the servicing the lot. But when it comes to enjoyment of the neighborhood and within the neighborhood, the building envelope is shielding. I mean, it could be empty. It could be packed in there. Looking at the plan that's drawn, there's not windows out of it besides for in the front facing 11 Mile. I don't think that the building envelope is in any way uncovering what's going on with the rest of the operation inside. So, like I said, it could be empty. It could be jam-packed. I don't think it makes a difference to anyone who's more than five feet away because you can't hear through cinder block.
Commissioner Douglas?
It could make a difference in parking. The hypothesis that all of the customers will walk in from the neighborhood, I don't necessarily think that that would be the case. And there, as we will learn in the site, the special land use and site plan, there are parking issues here. I just, I don't see it being necessary to the success of the hotel. I think it's a separate thing.
Any other comment?
So, I think, I think it's a great plan. I think, I like the idea that it not only will bring additional entertainment to the area. As Mr. Razor indicated, it'll also bring perhaps additional jobs to this area. It's a local company, like Commissioner Douglas said, spending funds locally and keeping everything within the community. And I also believe it's an establishment that really doesn't exist in that area with the craft cocktails perhaps down the road, more upscale foods and dining. I think it's a great project. I would be supportive of the motion.
So, that's all right. Anyone else? So, there is a motion on the table. So, we'll move forward with the vote of the motion. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right. The ayes have it. Or we will be moving forward with item number nine, which is the Planning Commission's recommendation, approval of special land use permit, service of alcohol beverages, Hotel Royal Oak. or luke. And we have Mr. Twain.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and City Commissioners. You do have an item before you that's secondary to the item you just passed. It is a request for your consideration of a special land use and site plan approval for the hotel that you've just been discussing. I think you've gone over quite a bit of the operation and the layout configuration of that, so I won't, I won't go through that. What I will indicate to you is that the zoning district for neighborhood business, the hotel itself is considered a non-conforming use, so this is considered an expansion of that non-conforming use. It also needs the special land use permit because of the alcohol service and the outdoor service areas. So those are three items that you'll see throughout the report that are relevant to you. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on the initial request at their November 14th meeting. You will note in the write-up that the Planning Commission voted four to two for the special land use approval and site plan approval, recommending its approval. Since that meeting, the petitioner did make modifications to the proposed site plan. I think those have been gone over by Lieutenant Renaud in your discussion, as I heard earlier. But they are listed in a narrative fashion on the fifth page of the report, there's some bullet items there that carries over to the sixth page of the report. Based on your last action, there were a couple of resolution options in the commission letter, but based on your approval of the liquor license, I would point you to the resolution that begins on the eighth page of the report. And it talks about the City Commission approval of the petitioner's revised plan about halfway down on the eighth page. There's three wherethes and then a therefore, and then 11 contingencies. Those contingencies I'll walk through briefly. The site plan as depicted before you indicates it'll be done in four phases. The petitioner will need to submit each phase, that so that we know if they finish phase one and don't move on, that phase one complies with all codes and ordinances. And the same would occur when they do phase two, that everything complies, and that if they need to add restrooms, they're done at that time. So item one is in relation to having a plan for each phase, it depicts each phase. Item three is in regards to an outdoor seating area along 11 Mile Road that the Planning Commission recommended removal, and that's still in the condition recommendation to you with the revised plan. Item three is in regards to the plan of operation you just approved, that you dealt with. Item four has to do with some zoning ordinance requirements that you're effectively waiving this evening if you move forward. One of those is a setback of the addition to the hotel up in the northwest corner for the restroom facilities and the expansion of the bar up in the northwest corner area. So there is a setback that would be required there because of the adjacent residential. That addition is going out to the property line. As I mentioned, you're waiving the expansion of the non-conforming use and structure. You are also dealing with a waiver of required parking under the zoning ordinance. You'll note the summary table in the report indicates there's a breakdown. The zoning ordinance requirements would generate a need for 157 spaces. The site has 52 as it's configured and is final, therefore you would be waiving 105 of the spots that would normally be required under the ordinance. Then there's some standard contingencies there in regards to food preparation, the outdoor service, five, six. Item seven is in regards to the refuge enclosure areas. The site plan depicts a dumpster enclosure up in the northwest corner, which has gates that swing out over the public right-of-way. The staff and Planning Commission recommendation has been that that get modified, either to have a roll-up door of some sort or a sliding gate, rather than having the proposed gates being able to swing over the sidewalk, potentially creating conflict with pedestrians. The other contingencies, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12, are standard contingencies at the, for compliance with any right-of-way work, exterior light fixtures and illuminations, and then any signage that they might propose down the road. So that's the resolution that staff would recommend if you consider approval of the submitted plan.
Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Twain? Commissioner Cola?
Can you talk more about condition seven and the dumpster enclosure too? Because looking at that and just some conversations and looking at the plans, has the petitioner talked to you at all about the rolling gate, the feasibility of that? I know the overhead door seems to be an issue with the sidewalk, right?
The original plan that went to the Planning Commission in November actually had an enclosed building with a roof and a roll-up door. It appears that the revised plan, if the dumpster is setting outside, because there's a cement masonry wall on the north property line, there's also one on the west property along, line along Potter. The gates that are depicted there are consistent with that, but the swing on them is out, which would put them out over the right-of-way. And if you've ever seen dumpster enclosures, those gates don't stay closed very often. They swing and blow in the wind. So what we're looking for is it either to be modified so they step back, or that it could be a sliding gate that would go along the wall. That contingency is simply to get rid of those gates that swing out. There's lots of ways to address that.
And has the planning department had that conversation with the petitioner about the potential?
Well, they've got a copy of this. Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's their choice on what they want to resubmit, how they want to address it.
Okay, so you guys haven't had a discussion though about like if they could go?
It hasn't been resolved.
Okay. And then there's also the, looks like a small dumpster on the east side of the property?
Right.
A two-yard. Did you have any recommendations on that?
Well, our recommendation is it either being closed or removed. That's still part of seven. That's the ordinance requirement. I believe they're asking for you to waive it and let it stay as is.
Are they indicating to you that they would provide any screening on it, or just not the vinyl screen that is being recommended, or what's the conversation been around that?
That, again, it's a code requirement that it be enclosed. It's not serviceable because there's parking spots in front of it, meaning you can't access it if someone's there parking there. I understand why they would like it to there. It's a long ways to go to the one up in the northwest corner if you're going from a restaurant or the diner that's in that southeast corner. There may be a better location for it, but again, it should be enclosed as.
And then if we add some sort of parking licensing agreement, it would be within these contingencies?
Well, in terms of parking, if you wanted to do license agreements with adjacent property owners, I would ask for clarification on how often, when, how many spots. My experience with license agreements with adjacent property owners is they fall apart. They get into arguments and then they're done. And then we're either in a position of closing the place down because they don't have those. So I'm not a huge fan of license agreements with adjacent property owners. The, the other item that comes into play is if the adjacent property owner has parking and it's required for their business, then they don't have any extra to provide unless they're closed. So that's going to limit when they're available potentially to say that they can be used for this other business.
Thank you.
Commissioner Macy?
I have a question about parking too. So the petitioner mentioned that they're double-counted, and I just wanted to get, dive into that a little bit. So it says, you know, for the sleeping units, 56 spaces are required, and then for the bar area, 40 spaces. And those are assuming that they're all separate establishments, right? Like the 56 people who are, is that right, or is there any overlap? Like the 56 people who are at the hotel are not the same 40 people who are at the restaurant?
Yeah, the zoning ordinance count is simply a cumulative total. It doesn't take into account who may be using it. There is no shared analysis on this property. The city has done shared analysis on planned unit developments in the past. We didn't, we haven't done one here. So this is, that parking number is just a cumulative total of if they were separate businesses like a Plaza. The PUD project on the northeast corner of Main and 11 Mile, we did a shared analysis that went out, had a parking consultant do an analysis of where people are, how often they're used, who's using it, and come up with an average or a ratio. But that's not here. Our numbers just, the square footage is this and the number of units is that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have question? Commissioner Douglas?
Point out questions, I'll have a comment later.
Okay, all right.
What petition?
All right, we do have a petitioner here. Would you like to come up and tell us about the project?
Good evening. Ms. Allen and I are kind of tag-teaming on the different legal aspects here. So Dennis Cowan, Plunkett Cooney, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner with respect to special land use and site plan. First, I want to tell you, your Planning Commission did an excellent job. We had about a two-hour and 15-minute discussion. So every one of these issues that you've discussed, we were also discussed there, and a recommendation came forward. And then as Mr. Twain has mentioned, we did have some changes that were necessitated by that. So there was a, there was a patio on the northeast corner, which the Planning Commission did not approve, and the discussion at that time was, you know, was that would be, that patio would be moved to the front, and it was primarily did. We also though have shown on the site plan about a 430 square foot patio right south of the building, which won't be visible, which is about the size of many patios in your backyard, so it's very small. So those patios are now on the site plan and would be part of the approval. We do have a couple of items that I would ask you to waive or to consider that Mr. Twain has mentioned, and that would be specifically that the gate that we've proposed would be allowed at the waste receptacle enclosure. We really can't do a roll-up door for the size of the waste receptacle that will be picked up. For a roll-up door, you have to have an infrastructure. These receptacles are picked up and they go overhead, so the roll-up door would, the infrastructure would get ripped up. So you can't really have a roll-up door, at least in, under this, the kind of way we're situated. The second thing is, is that with respect to a rolling gate, we would probably have to dig up the sidewalk because to put posts in and things of that nature, we can't put it on the inside because that's where the building is going to go for the ADA restrooms. So although in theory a rolling door, you know, would be possible, we'd probably have to use the sidewalk and get some kind of licensing agreement. And really, the simplest thing is just to do what many places do in Royal Oak, is they do have the gates that fold out. We'll do our very best to, you know, make sure it stays closed and probably is going to stay locked because there's no, there's no need to have anybody there except at the time when the receptacle is being, is being emptied, or when employees are using it to fill. So with refuse. So we would ask your consideration in that regard for the gate to be utilized there. Also, there was reference, I recall, we, there's two, there's a fence that we are replacing that's in the northwest corner that will be masonry wall. That's no problem. But there was reference, and maybe it was a little confusion, there is a gate on the east side, there's a space between two buildings, and we told the neighbors we would put a solid gate there, not a wall. We can't build a masonry wall there because that gate accesses the area behind the hotel that the hotel is part of, the hotel property, and there's a chain-link fence back there also. So that, the only way we can get to that section is through this gate. So we can't put a masonry wall there. We can put a solid gate, and we proposed an eight-foot tall gate that would help with any sound tunnel effects into the future. And then finally, although it's a small matter, it's somewhat an important matter, there's a small two-yard dumpster next to where the diner will be. It has been there for as long as anyone can remember, according to Mr. Razor, and we really think that, while we understand the spirit of the ordinance, we think that he can disguise that very nicely or wrap it in some decorative manner, but that really an enclosure would be kind of a bulky enclosure for a small two-yard dumpster. This is actually done through a city program with one of the waste haulers, and it doesn't, you don't need to go into it, it just gets rolled out because it's just a two-yard, it's a very small dumpster. And so, but it's been an efficient dumpster for that side of the property, and we would ask that the enclosure be waived. So those are just three details that we would like you to consider. With respect to the parking, we do believe that, as Mr. Twain has mentioned, that the zoning ordinance is somewhat formulaic. It judges each one of these sites as if it were an independent business and needed its own parking. I think we all know, and the industry standards show, that, that most of the people using the facilities will be people already staying at the hotel. We estimate that to be about 50%. Many of the neighbors have expressed during this process that they want to use the facilities, they can walk to the hotel bar, they don't have to get in their car or walk farther downtown unless they want more exercise, and that's up to their choice, but they would have that option. And we believe that would be upwards of 20% of the users of the facility. So we believe the real parking shortfall, if and when we have an event and everything's being used, is probably about 35 cars. And the Village Restaurant has about 37 spaces, but if you want us to secure licensing agreements for about 50 spaces, that would probably be reasonable in light of the circumstances. So that is, I'm here to answer any questions on the site, and certainly we have Jeff Klaas who's here who did the design. Keep in mind that the site is 30,000 square feet, the entire property, and we're dealing with about 10% of it with the changes that are being made, the one small addition and then the patios.
So any questions for Mr. Cowan?
I just have one question about the parking with the Village Grill. I think the owners of the grill have been, you know, vocal in it, stating that they'd be willing to allow parking in their lot, and they do currently. So is it anticipated that they will not be open during any of the times where the?
They're open. My understanding, there's still six, I think, is there? Six o'clock is what they're open till?
Yeah, it's Saturday and Sunday, it's three.
Yeah, it's even earlier. Yeah, it's six during the week and it's, yeah, three o'clock.
So there wouldn't be any competition with utilizing that with their, their customers? Okay.
Commissioner Macy?
So I guess, I guess my question about, about the dumpsters is, I mean, this is, you know, a lot, a lot has gone into the planning of this, and I just, it just seems like this is a detail that could really make it unattractive for the area around it. And so I understand what you're saying about the challenges with doing it, but, you know, this whole project is a challenge, and I'm just wondering, so if, if as was recommended by staff, we do require the enclosures and the different type of gate for the dumpsters, is that, I mean, is that a deal breaker? I guess I'm confused about asking for those kind of small changes, doesn't seem like... Doesn't seem like, doesn't seem like it should be so hard. I'm wondering what the stance is on those.
Well, first, I hope you'd appreciate the fact that where the barge dumpster is going, we're undergoing a lot of expense. So we're going to, we're going to chop down the neighbor's tree. They've consented to that. If you've seen that tree, it is totally embedded in the wires. So it's going to be interesting for whoever the, the arborist is or the, the tree company that takes it down. So we're putting in a lot of expense there, and then building a masonry wall, which doesn't exist. There's kind of a fence that has seen its days and needs to be replaced, so we are putting a pretty significant expense into that refuse area. And this just seemed, from our viewpoint, to not be necessary as an expense because of the fact that it's such a small dumpster. And to have an enclosure, I'm not aware of anybody that has a dumpster for a two, a two-yard dumpster enclosure in town. The five-yard dumpsters, the larger dumpsters, yes, absolutely, I believe those need to be enclosed, and they are, but for this size dumpster, it's, it's, it's really, it's about the size of four, you know, the receptacles we have for our houses? It's about the size of four of those. It's very small. It's a two-yard dumpster. It's not very big at all, and I think to enclose it isn't, at least from our viewpoint, necessary to, for any kind of health, safety kind of reason.
And the
It's emptied one, it's emptied once a week, so it's not going to, you know, it's going to be, it's not going to be like garbage, it's going to be overflowing from it. And if that ever got filled, we have the larger dumpster that the employees can take refuse over to. And it's never been that situation, but it is the one that is next to the diner, the proposed diner.
And the gate?
Dennis, can you mind if I hold on for a second?
Sure.
So Commissioner Macy, the, the two-yard is actually dumped by the city, and we bought it. We own it. I'm going to wrap it and make it look really cool and artistic because it rolls out to get dumped, so you can't really put it in an enclosure where it's at. It just doesn't work unless you get rid of a parking block, and then I'm worried that people will run into it. So it's not a, not a huge thing. We rolled it down the sidewalk ourselves from the west side of the property on one occasion. John and I, it's like, it's a small thing. The other dumpster in the northwest section, we really agonized over because you can't go in and grab it if it's enclosed. The biggest you can do, I talked to the folks at Runco, is a three-yard, and if we had a three-yard in there that they had to go open a door and pull out, we'd probably have to dump that three, four, or five times a week because we have an eight-yard right now, and get that dumped one to two times a week. So the only way to do it is to put that eight-yard into that space where they have to, like, you know, use the truck to dump it in. And if you open the doors, then you're blocking the sidewalk from people interfering with the truck, you know, I mean, you wouldn't want people walking in the sidewalk from the trucks over the sidewalk dumping this can. But we'll keep it closed because not only is it a good business practice, but we don't want people dumping stuff in our dumpster because it happens all the time with our dumpster now that's open and accessible on the northwest corner. And it's a pain because people will dump building debris into it, and then Runco won't dump it. So it's a real pain because we got to go dumpster diving in our own dumpster to get our neighbor's trash, so we want it to be closed. If we did a rolling door, we'd have to move the building in to accommodate that, or there's a strip of land between the sidewalk and our, our fence, our masonry fence, it's probably eight inches. So if we could mount the, the roly, the barn door, if you would, on the building and have a licensing agreement for eight inches of, I'm not, actually, I'm not even sure if it's Royal Oak or ours, but there's like eight inches between the sidewalk and our property line. So maybe it's ours and the fence doesn't go, but we could mount something on that that rolls and locks. And that's not a, you know, deal breaker. I understand the concern about the doors blowing open, but John's not going to let the doors be blown open because that would be bad. I hope that answered your question. Sorry to interrupt.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Cowan? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
All right. Since we still have Mr. Thwing here, any more questions for him that have popped up? Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, having heard that about the dumpsters, what's your take?
Well, I'll split them up. The one that's up in the northwest corner, which has the gate swinging out over the right-of-way and the sidewalk. As I said earlier, I think there's a lot of ways to address that without those swinging out. The dumpster's some 25 feet, 20 feet between the building and the property line. The dumpster can easily be pushed back. The wall can easily be recessed so that the gates, if they want them to swing out, could, but they're not out over the sidewalk. Secondly, you could put in a sliding gate rather than a swinging gate and just slide it to one side or the other, north or south. I know the report said an overhead door, and that's why I brought it up before, but the prior plan actually had a enclosed building with a roof, and they proposed an overhead door, so that just kind of carried forward. But there's a lot of ways to redesign that without the gates going out over the right-of-way. So in my opinion, it shouldn't be allowed to occur. It, it impacts pedestrians potentially, someone riding a bike getting hit by that gate swinging open. To me, it's, it shouldn't be done. Whether or not you want to require the enclosure or the removal of the smaller one-to-two-yard dumpsters in your court, it's inside their facility. It's not really visible from the street. So that's really in your court as to whether you want to require it to be enclosed under the ordinance or add it to one of the waivers.
Thank you. Commissioner Coles?
Thank you, Commissioner. Brings it down. I guess just one question on that smaller dumpster. Could we add a contingency that the city reserves the right to require every, for some reason, don't think right now, could we add in the contingency, we reserve the right to amend the site plan in the future to require it?
Right.
We can.
You can add, as indicated, you can add contingencies that, that special land use that you feel might need to be mitigated.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I want to talk a little bit about parking because at the planning commission, we talk about parking, not for you, just
Just general.
Just general. Yep. To me, parking is a market decision. If your business doesn't have enough parking, customers won't go there, they'll file bad reviews on Google reviews. Your, the, your neighboring business will call the cops because you've got, you know, cars parked on their property, and they'll come and yell at you, and so I'm really inclined to think that parking will, parking issues will resolve themselves. I'm not concerned about the site in terms of, of that one factor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any comments?
Oh, Commissioner Macy?
I have a question for Commissioner Douglas. So I, my, my impression from what you said at the last agenda item was that because of that west bar area, you were concerned, I thought you were saying you were concerned about parking, and it made me wonder about parking because it seems like if you were coming specifically for that bar, you might not even, you might just park in the neighborhood. So I'm wondering if that was a concern you had, and now it sounds like no. So I'm just
No, my, so I approved the submission at the planning commission because I don't object to the building, the, the special land use. It's the liquor license use in that building and the addition of those services that concerns me. So if this building were used for, for other purposes, I wouldn't have a problem with it. It's the liquor license in particular, which kind of doesn't answer your question, does it?
So you're not concerned about parking?
No.
Okay.
Commissioner Coles?
Thank you. Somehow, we've started talking a lot about dumpsters, more so than I thought we would tonight, but
You started it.
I did. So I, I guess I wonder if a contingency here might, you know, I, I don't quite understand why a sliding door is not feasible. I know we heard, I talked about licensing agreement with the city, but there's also 21 feet of new building being added to the structure. Leaving off eight inches of that would probably more than adequately provide for a rolling door if they can't be accommodated by the existing green space that's already between the building and the, the sidewalk. So I would wonder if the petitioner would potentially be amenable to, with approval tonight on the contingency of changing the plan to allow for a rolling sliding door.
That's a sliding, I think the rolling door is the one that goes up, the sliding door. I have a solution. Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, we could rewrite item number seven just to say, "All waste and recycling containers shall be kept within the proposed enclosure, and the enclosure shall be equipped with a door that does not cross the public sidewalk and leave it to the staff and the petitioner to come up with a solution."
That's why you've been on playing.
And I think the petitioner was about to make a comment. Okay? Okay, really good.
But that doesn't address the little one, too.
That's, you're right.
So I guess that's a conversation, I don't think anyone wants to have that. I've never actually seen the little one, so I may have a hard time visualizing, and I guess, just having been in the restaurant industry, I mean, I love the idea that it's two yards, that's a cute little dumpster, but that's going to be filled up in like two days.
Yeah, it, it fills up. I'm sorry. We actually use it more than anything for housekeeping, for emptying the trashcans on the premises.
So could we surround it with potted plants, something to, some sort of screening, even like a mesh screening, I wonder, would hit the spirit of what we're trying to accomplish?
I'm sure we could figure it out. The only problem is you have to roll it out to the parking lot, and they do that at like 2:00 in the morning or Sunday at, I don't know when, but they never have a problem with it. So it's on wheels, and you have to roll it out to where you can get at it, and I think you have to turn it around 180 degrees to attach it to the truck. It's one of those that has the, like a circle, and the truck grabs it from behind, so to roll it out and turn it, I'm not sure they can do it, but I'm happy to work with the planning department to see if we can come up with something that works for it. Like I said, I'm worried because of the location of the parking bumper, and again, if I could go back to 1954, I'd have a conversation with Mr. Jones about trash.
Are you, you still had your hand up as if you were pondering, so
Oh, me?
Yes.
No, no, I'm, I'm trying to find a drawing. Thank you.
Can you explain why the trash maze is being closed? What's the rationale for that? Maybe that's for, sorry.
Mr. Thwing?
Well, generally, I think it would probably be, fall under the guise of an aesthetic reasoning because dumpsters themselves are, end up being pretty trashy-looking. They would get overfilled, the tops aren't always closed down, so I think it, some of it is simply for an aesthetic reason, and to control where they're actually put, placed on the site. They have a tendency to move around if you don't have a spot designated for them. They could end up in parking spots, they could end up in, in the drive paths, so I think those are the two basic reasons.
Commissioner, Jason, I'm sorry. It's late.
I think that this might be for the petitioner, but I guess with the plan to have the café open in that east building, is there a plan to, to maintain that same-sized dumpster at that point, or is there a plan for a new dumpster situation?
Actually, I talked with Dora at Village Grill about chickmating in on the cost of her dumpster and her grease dumpster so that we could use theirs when we have a, a restaurant operation there, which would seem to be a little bit more efficient. And then we could keep this one for trash and like wrap it like a, you know, bug or put the logo on it or God knows what, and make it look kind of cute. Because it only makes sense, I mean, their, Village Grill's dumpster is right around the corner from that end cap, so, and Dora didn't have a problem with it. We, we buy our guests breakfasts at the Village Grill. They love the Village Grill, so we have a great relationship with the Village Grill. I ate lunch at the Village Grill today.
Yes, I'm a fan as well. So I guess, Commissioner Thwing, is, I mean, is that, I'm just not familiar with this, is that normal to have restaurants share a dumpster like that? Is that, would that be?
Yeah, I guess.
So it sounds like the plan would be that once the café opens, that, that the dumpster would, they would then start sharing the dumpster with the Village Grill dumps? Is that, is that something that occurs? Is that
News to me.
Okay. I guess I'm just wondering about where all the extra refuge is going to go once you have that café opened.
Well, there's nothing to say that they can't get picked up like any dumpster facility. You get it picked up more than once.
So that's the plan?
You get it picked up daily, you get it picked up twice a day. That's, that's a generational, I mean, depends on what you're generating. There, there was some discussion earlier on about eliminating that small two-yard dumpster and sharing next door with, but that's not what was submitted, so we're reacting to what was submitted.
I understand. Thank you.
Commissioner Coles?
I guess just to Commissioner Sheezus' point, too, I believe, if, correct me if I'm wrong, but downtown behind, like, Seibar, that public alley there, there is a large dumpster that's shared by multiple tenants downtown, right?
Correct.
So that, that is a present that, that is used in other locations. I guess, back to the steer dumpster, Mr. Razor, I don't understand, if, if it's surrounded by parking spaces, how will it be picked up by this machine? If there is a car in all three of the spaces around it, how, how do they lift it up and service it?
I am not usually there when they take it, but it's like it, it's hard to describe. It's at a corner where there's some spaces that are shorter, so there's enough room for them to take it out. And it gets magically dumped. John, have you seen it done? What do they do?
It's dumped on all, all days. It's dumped twice a week on all days. Days where the hotel is not full, days where the parking lot is not full, days where it's easily accessible to Runco Waste.
So there, but you have to move it. It's on wheels. So it's, I mean, I could try to figure out how to put an enclosure, but I think the solution might be worse than the problem because I Googled up a bunch of dumpster wraps, and you can make it look super cute, and you can make it look like SpongeBob or all sorts of things, and it might be more aesthetically pleasing to wrap it.
Any other questions on this side?
So, Mr. Thwing, the purpose of the enclosure is more for the aesthetics, not necessarily for keeping out, you know, illegal dumping or, you know, protecting against rodents or anything?
Well, aesthetics is one issue of it, but as I said, it's a, it gives it a location, a house to where that dumpster needs to go back to. It doesn't move. It, it, if you, if you don't have one, you'll find them getting dropped by the ways taller anywhere on the site. They'll, they'll end up in a parking spot, they'll end up in multiple locations. So, as I said, I think those are the two biggest reasons for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Herzog?
So this is another question for the petitioner. How long has the, the container been there? Is it, is that its location? Is that, how long has it been housed where it's at?
I would say close to a decade, but I don't think it was there when we bought the property. So it's been there quite some time.
Okay.
I have never seen it wander anywhere else than where it is.
Okay.
But we can push it back to where it goes, so if, I mean, they left it someplace weird, it's on wheels, you can push it where, it's like a big skateboard, you can push it wherever you want it to go. So we would put it back to where it lives.
Thank you. Commissioner Coles?
I guess, you know, now that we're talking about this a little more, absent a public health reason, I think at least with this two-yard dumpster, I don't care if it's in an enclosure or not. If it's not a public health, this is just aesthetics thing, I don't care about the aesthetics of this hotel. Like, that's, that's a them problem. There's trash coming out of it. It's, you know, people won't want to stay there, so I'm starting to care less and less about this two-yard dumpster. I do still care about the sliding door, on having some sort of enclosure on the Potter Street because I do think that impacts the neighborhood. I think that that impacts quality of life beyond the hotel, but the actual, where it goes, this two-year dumpster goes, that, that becomes a hotel operation problem, at least in my opinion.
Commissioner Douglas?
I'm going to take a swing at a motion here. So I move that we approve, we adopt the language where the city commission approves the special land use and site plan as revised by the petitioner, and I would rewrite, rewrite condition number seven to say, "All waste and recycling containers shall be kept within the proposed enclosure, and the enclosure shall be equipped with a door that does not cross the public sidewalk." And I would leave all of the other conditions as they are.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Is there a discussion? Commissioner Kolo?
So, so just to clarify about, does your petition include, motion that include enclosure for the two-yard dumpster?
No. You made a, you made a compelling case.
Okay.
Should that be a part of your motion?
You said, so can you restate what you mean by item seven, because item seven says all.
Oh, good point. Yeah, I'm sorry, you're right. The waste and recycling container on the west side of the property shall be kept within the proposed enclosure and the enclosure shall be equipped with a door that does not cross the public sidewalk. Good point.
All right, we have a slight amendment to that motion. Commissioner Herzog seconds. Any discussion? I'll just say, I think that's an appropriate motion. I think the way of, you know, dealing with this particular trash receptacle is, you know, there appears to be some sort of method, whether or not it's the sliding or keeping a lock, a lock on it so it doesn't swing open, just any way to make certain that it does not necessarily cross the sidewalk and possibly harm bikers or joggers or little children on their tricycles. So, all right. Is there any discuss, any other discussion? All right, ready for a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, ayes have it. And, good luck.
Can't receive a dumpster. Thank you very much. We'll work out a break. Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to number 10. We have Mr. Twain again. This is regarding the rezoning of 503 Troy Street.
Briefly, you may recall that this item was before you at your December 11th meeting. The reason it's not on the consent agenda with the other development was it was not a unanimous vote by the commission. The petitioner did modify the site plan pursuant to the city commission's action on the 11th, which was to include the 10-foot triangle clearance setback at the northwest corner of the building. They did do that and they revised it, put it on all sheets in the packet. And we did get a signed copy of the development agreement that goes along with the planned unit development that was delivered today in the office. And in the attachment, you will see, under attachment two in the development agreement, there's some highlighted changes from the original distribution that went out in the packet. There's the strike throughs are in red, which were eliminated in the highlighted yellow were the additions or revisions. But that, those were included in the document that was signed by the petitioner today, so there is a suggested resolution on the commission letter if you're willing to take forth.
Thank you, Mr. Twain. Any questions for Mr. Twain?
And the petitioner is here as well.
All right, if there are no questions for Mr. Twain, then the petitioners would like to present.
Very briefly, Dennis Cowan, on behalf of Carbon on Troy, Jeff Julius, one of the principals, is here this evening. First of all, we want to thank you for your vote of confidence at the last meeting regarding this project. We think it's, you know, ground, it's, it's very cutting, ground cutting project for the, for the city and I know meets a lot of the requirements and hopes and aspirations you have for projects in the city. We had a couple, really, they were just small clarifications and I think because of the holiday season and everything, we got them in just before, you know, print time. So as a result, the, the main thing was with the Energy Star rating, you can't apply ahead of time. This is like the lead, some of you may remember the lead situation. We have to kind of register with a partnership agreement and the application comes at a later date after you've had 12 months of experience and you can give them meter readings for gas and electric. So that's why we had to make that change there. There is no stepping back from that requirement. We, we made that proposal, we're gonna live by it and gladly live by it, but it's just more a technical issue, so they're not default right off the bat by saying they made an application when they can't make an application under the rules of the company. So that's really our, we, we support everything else, the remainder of the agreement's fine, those three small clarifications and we're prepared, hopefully respectfully ask for your approval and then move forward. So thank you very much and we're here to answer any questions.
All right, any questions for the petitioner or their counsel? Commissioner Herzog?
When the city did their greenhouse gas emissions, residential housing was the highest, one of the higher emissions for carbon and so this development is going to take into consideration, education is part of it to the, to the tenants. Is there any education that I think the community could really benefit to the education that might be happening at this location to, to help with our, attaining our greenhouse gas goals? Is there, can you talk a little bit about that education for the tenants and maybe if some of that can be shared with the community?
Yeah, and I would say that we recently met, at least I did, your sustainability director and we said, once we got approved, we'd be glad to sit down and share what we're gonna be doing and then share that information with her, what we're gonna do with the tenants in terms of education. Yeah.
Good evening. So, so part of our education plans are to help the tenants understand how much power they're using. So the panels that we're planning on providing will have the ability to provide like almost live streaming on their usage. A lot of things people don't understand regarding power usage are things like, they're called vampire power, refrigerators, you know, your wifi, so encouraging them to hook them up to, or unplug them at night for like wifi, it uses a lot of power. So things like that, like my partner who can't be here tonight, he's more of the energies are, but his background is in the energy sector and so he, a lot of those ideas come from him, but I know that part of the encouragement for the tenants to have a better understanding of their energy usage and then also kind of an education on the construction methods and materials, so we are gonna be part of what we hope to drive people to come live in our building. It's gonna be cleaner and safer from an environmental standpoint, living in the building. And then obviously air flushing at night, so utilizing cool outdoor air to cool the interior of your space and not having to use your air conditioning. A lot of just like smart habits that will allow you to reduce your energy consumption while still living in like a healthy, comfortable lifestyle.
Any other questions for the petitioners? Okay, all right. So we do have a resolution here. Is there a motion perhaps or discussion? Commissioner Kolo?
I move approval of a resolution.
Okay, so there is a motion. Is there any discussion?
Is there a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, is there a second? Commissioner Herzog, second, is there any discussion? Commissioner Kolo?
Thank you, Mayor Proton. I supported this project last time, I'll support it again. I think it's, you know, a nice step forward for the city. It really sets a tone for new development of what we're looking for. One of the major emphasis of our community benefits plan has been environmental protection and I do appreciate that. I also appreciate the changes that were made to the site plan, the 10-foot triangles that were added and the communication between the neighborhood to try to make this something that the neighborhood also was happier with. So I know not everything happened that maybe the neighborhood wanted, I think that was a big concern that we alleviated, so I thank the developer for that and look forward to this being voted.
Anyone else? I'll say, I don't think I supported this one the last time, but I will say I am, I second everything that Commissioner Kolo indicated, that there was a conscious effort to put forward the benefits that, you know, we've indicated that we would like to see in these types of, of buildings from the really stellar environmental aspects of it to, I appreciate the inclusion of the 10-foot triangle that was proposed the last time. I think it's, you know, a decent project, so I think I would be supporting this motion. Any other comments? All right, ready for the vote? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
No.
All right, the ayes do have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we are on to number 11, which is the proposed amendment to the Royal Code of Ordnance to establish a local officers' compensation committee. And we do have Mr. Rochowski.
Thank you. On the agenda for your consideration is a proposed amendment to the Royal Code of Ordinances that adds a new chapter that would establish by law local officers' compensation commission that is provided for by state law. The proposed ordinance mirrors identically state law, so we are in compliance with all the requirements of that ordinance contained in the Home Rule City Act. And as discussed in the memo, the, the basic parameters of the requirements of that ordinance are listed in that memo and as noted, if established, then they would have the duty to make a determination and set salary of, of the elected officials within the city. The proposed ordinance has no real legal issues or challenges because it's clearly permitted by state law and it's drafted in stricter adherence with state law.
Yeah, we do have a meeting going on up here. If you can lower your voice or step outside to speak.
Thank you.
Commissioner Rochowski?
In addition, there's some other listed advantages to establishing such a compensation commission. Therefore, we have a proposed resolution. I will apologize, there appears to have been a typo that showed up in the resolution regarding the third line down at the end. It should say new chapter instead of new vaptor. So I would ask if the commission does indicate a desire to move forward on this ordinance that if the resolution be adopted as amended with that minor change. Thank you.
If I could ask, Mr. Rochowski, can you talk a little bit about what brought about this requested change?
Sure. I was approached by a number of elected officials indicating that they wanted to essentially consider this ordinance to be more inclusive of all residents who may want to become in local, become involved as a local affected, elected official, but are potentially hampered by socioeconomic restraints given their tremendous amount of time and energy that you know as city elected officials are required to expend in fulfilling their duties of an elected city commissioner. And the current rates date back to 19, and I'm trying to remember, 1945, I believe, for 55. So $20 in 1955, the equivalent today is approximately $220. As most of you know and appreciate, $20 is not enough to pay for like adequate daycare for somebody to attend a commission meeting and some other reasons that are listed in the letter, such as many or majority of the communities surrounding Royal Oak do have such an adoption of this state allowed ordinance or state law to provide for the review of a separate committee to determine those, those, a fair, a fair compensation for elected commissioners. So that, that was the primary reason and I would leave it to your discussion to discuss any other important reasons for this piece of legislation.
Yes, anyone have any questions for Mr. Rochowski? Commissioner Macy?
Yeah, I saw in the ordinance that it says you have to wait a year before you change it by charter ordinance, is that? Yes?
If I may, yeah, so.
That's not the question, so I just.
Correct. State law says that if you establish an elected officials' compensation commission, that after a year after the date of the ordinance goes into effect, then the elected, the compensation of elected officials that's currently within our charter provisions, you can consider a charter amendment to amend that. Does that make sense? So.
Well, my, my question was gonna be, so does that mean a year from now that we could amend, is, a year from now and no sooner apparently, we could amend the charter to say, instead of $20 per, per meeting, that it would be dependent on this new ordinance?
No, here, I'll, can I start over? So our charter.
Let me ask my question, because the question I have is, can we, and if so, when, amend the, the charter to allow for what I just said? So instead of saying $20 per meeting, to say, as set by the, this committee, this elected officials' compensation committee?
So, so two things are at play here. First of all, the, the charter sets the compensation of the commission at the mayor, and the mayor presently, at the $20 per commission and $40 for the mayor. To revise the charter, as you know, we have to go to the vote of the public and, and that takes about a year. What this says is, if you, and this is a copy and paste from state law, that's why that's in there, because it's required from state law, that after one year of the data, the effective date of the ordinance, you can then propose a charter amendment or revision to change the original charter provision. I agree, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me either why that's in the state law and that's why it's required, because if that was the case, why wouldn't you just propose a charter amendment instead of an ordinance revision? Correct? Charter amendment is different because it requires a vote of the public, whereas this ordinance is more of a living document that they would meet every other year, every two years and do a study as to what the, what the compensation should be established at and that's based on current conditions, whereas a charter amendment doesn't, isn't a living document, it's a permanent thing. It only changes with great effort through the election process and through the process of going to the state for approval of the language. So I'm not quite sure why the state law has that in there, other than the fact that they're leaving the door open, that even if you elect to do an ordinance revision or an ordinance amendment to, to allow for this, that you can still go back and change your charter, which you can do anyways. So it, maybe it's just overstating the obvious.
Okay, so setting aside that provision, which I think you've now well explained, is there anything that stops us from putting a charter amendment on the ballot that says going forward, our compensation will be set by this elected officials' compensation? In other words, bringing the charter up to date with what we will actually be doing? Is there anything that stops us from doing that?
And I'd have to look into that a little more. I think that, I, I think the way I've read this, and there's not a ton of history, there's only one or two cases out there and I have not found the legislative history because it's old, so it's not easily accessible. But I, I think you should do it one way or the other. Either you set the ordinance to do it or the charter revision. I guess it is possible. I would have to look into that a little more and get back to you on that. I'm not saying it isn't possible, I'm just not sure because I would have to look more into the intent of the legislature back in, I think it was 1972-ish when they passed this law.
Okay, I mean, feel free to come back with me, but I'm just gonna explain a little bit more because I think you're still talking about something different than I'm talking about. So right now, we have the charter that says $20 and now we're creating this separate commission that's going to be setting the compensation, overriding the charter, which is allowed by state law. I understand that.
Correct.
But our charter will now be outdated and I'm not saying, why don't we set the charter to whatever number that they come up with? I'm saying, can we amend the charter to say we have this commission that is going to be determining elected officials? So you don't have to answer now, but that's the question I'm asking.
And, and you can propose the charter revision, the danger in that is, it may or may not get passed by the electors.
I understood, understood, but it's already being, if that's what's already happening, it just seems like, is there a reason not to try?
You certainly could do that, I think, if you want. You could explore that option.
Commissioner Kolo?
I guess I have a question that follows up along. Commissioner Macy, I think we have a charter provision, someone correct me if I'm wrong, that says any portion of the charter that is superseded by state law is rescinded. So would that null and void that portion of the charter because now it's nullified by state law because this is authorized by the Home Rule City Act? Also a question I'll have to answer tonight, but that might clean up the charter, right?
And that's part of it, but this specific state law. And that's part of it, but this specific state law says, if you have such a charter provision as we do, that, and if you take the step of enacting this ordinance, the ordinance controls over the charter provision, which is backwards thinking. So, I, you know, you could try to clean up the charter if you want. I don't think you necessarily have to clean up the charter, since you have a clear ordinance and we can, you can do a supplement, not a supplement, but a, we do this often, doesn't require a charter revision, where you supplement the charter with a, this provision has been overridden by or supplanted by ordinance, whatever, state law this. So, we have old election provisions in our charter that are superseded by state law, so we annotate it. Instead of doing a revision and repealing that charter, you annotate it and said, this provision is superseded by state law in reference to state law. So, that is a possibility we could explore as well, if that's the desire of the commission.
Commissioner Maisy.
Sorry, just finishing off that. So, I totally understand that what we're proposing is legal, and I'm only saying that as you look to our charter as our document, it gets more and more outdated, and we have a charter review committee, and we have the ability to make changes to it. And so, to the extent that we're overriding things, great, but I'm just wondering why we don't sometimes do some of that cleanup? And it seems like we have opportunities to do that.
Commissioner Douglas.
Having sat on the charter review committee, I will say that a former city attorney once joked that, you know, you could probably replace fifty percent of our current charter with a statement, this subject is governed by state law. There are a lot of, to Mr. Grochowski's point, a lot of sections where that is the case, and putting those all up for a vote is onerous and unnecessary.
Anyone else have any questions for Mr. Grochowski?
And I will say, I do also advise the charter review committee, and having just started in that position with them, when I do discover charter revisions that have been superseded or basically invalidated by state law, we have that discussion about annotating that charter. To let people who are looking at the charter that, hey, by the way, here's a provision that's now overruled or superseded by state law, and here's a state law section that does so, so you can then look at the applicable state law. So, as a matter of course, we do examine and look at that, and I make that recommendation to them. And as a matter of fact, we're working on a table of contents as an annotation to the charter, so people can navigate the charter reasonably, since we haven't had a table of contents since the charter was enacted.
Great hard trade.
Yes.
All right. So, is there a, Commissioner Douglas?
I move approval of the resolution.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Teesam, second?
And if I may, just to echo what Mr. Grochowski said, this is an equity issue. We at the table, most of us have, I'm retired, others have professional careers that enable them to take time off sometimes for an afternoon meeting, that enable them to have childcare so that they can participate. And I think if we want to make the opportunity to govern available to all, this is a process that will make that happen.
Anyone else? Any discussion?
All right. I have to say that, you know, I'm a strong believer that anything that was drafted in nineteen fifty-five needs to be reviewed. It should have been reviewed a long time ago. But I appreciate the sentiment that, I mean, this is just a review committee to take a look, to see what the compensation or if the compensation should be changed. I know many of us, you know, at least I joke that, you know, the twenty bucks doesn't buy me my coffee before or my wine after, but, I mean, we all got into this job or ran for this position knowing that, you know, it's twenty bucks a meeting. We didn't do this for the money, we did it for, you know, the love of the city. But there are many people out there, like Commissioner Douglas indicated, that love the city, want to work for the city, but just maybe not have the ability to do so based on putting on way more time than, you know, you receive compensation for. So, I am fully supportive of at least putting together a committee to take a look at our compensation.
All right. Anyone else? All right. So, we'll go for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So, Mr. Grochowski, what is the next step in getting this committee seated?
So, this was the first reading, it'll be back for a second reading on a consent agenda, and assuming there's no objection on the consent agenda, it'll go into effect. I will note for the record that we're limited to odd years, and so they won't be able to meet until the next odd year, so. But in the meantime, we can make the necessary appointments, get the ball rolling, and then by the time the new year comes around, a year from now, then they can start their work of examining in depth, and I'll certainly be happy to get them started in their task.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to the final item of the night. Let's see, our finance director here. Thank you for the approval of the deficit elimination plan automobile parking fund. Ms. Lichtenberg.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and commissioners. This agenda item is a continuation of the discussion that we had in December, at the December twelfth meeting regarding the audit for the city. And part of the outcome from the year ended June thirty, twenty twenty-three, was that the automobile parking system fund did end the year in a deficit position. When this happens, and because the auto parking fund is an enterprise fund, there's a series of steps that we go through in looking at the financial stability, which includes looking at working capital. So, we did have some other deficits that were reported in the audit, but the only one that needed to be addressed formally and reported to the state of Michigan is the auto parking fund. So, there was a working capital deficit as of June thirty, twenty twenty-three, and as a result of that, we are required to bring to you and have a formal resolution that accompanies our deficit elimination plan that is submitted to the State Department of Treasury. So, some of the background related to the auto parking fund, this is definitely a fund that was significantly impacted by COVID. There was a significant change in usage that occurred both during the shutdown and as businesses began to reopen. There was a change in the workforce habits, more remote work, a number of factors that have impacted the parking usage over time. In twenty sixteen, there was a new parking structure that was constructed at Second and Center Streets, and there were bonds issued related to that. The DDA currently pays fifty percent, and the auto parking fund pays the other fifty percent on those bonds. In twenty eighteen, the eleven-mile road structure was constructed, bonds were issued on that as well. The difference between those two bond issues is, the second bond issue, the DDA pledged their support, but the contribution only applies if there is a net revenue deficiency. So, it's not an automatic cost sharing, but the provision is currently in existence, set so that the DDA can contribute up to fifty percent of the debt service required. Of course, twenty twenty came, COVID came, there was an action taken by the DDA, and I should note that the DDA Infrastructure Committee is the city's parking committee. At that time, in the downtown area, they made the decision and brought it before us to offer free parking. So, for the months of July and August of twenty twenty, all parking in the downtown area was offered twenty-four-seven free, both surface and structures. And in return for that, the DDA paid the auto parking fund one hundred thousand dollars for each of those two months. In September of twenty twenty, the free parking ended, and it was reinstated to have the first two hours of structure parking remain free. What did not get reinstated at that time was the, there was a five-dollar flat parking fee for any vehicles that entered the parking structures after five P.M. That was not reinstated at that time. In addition, there has been a significant change with the construction of this building, the changes in this campus, the Henry Ford building, and all of those items impact the eleven-mile structure. In late twenty twenty, we also had the move to the MPS parking system related to the street meters. That did not impact the parking structures, but it did impact the surface parking. Included in the twenty twenty-three budget was a million-dollar contribution from the ARPA funds, but that was just to, just an initial hurdle to get the fund through. One other item that has occurred in February of twenty twenty-three, there was an action taken related to the street meter parking to change the grace period from five minutes to fifteen minutes, and to increase the maximum time limit from two hours to three hours. So, those events combined really have resulted in difficult timing for the auto parking fund. What we're proposing in the deficit elimination plan is a combination of actions to make up for the losses that occurred during COVID, and that would be a transfer of funds, which would include two-point-five million dollars from the ARPA-enabled funds. It would include two shares from the general fund, five hundred thousand dollars related to increase in ticket enforcement activity prior to June thirty of twenty twenty-three, and then an additional five hundred thousand dollars from the general fund for the same reason, but for the current fiscal year that we're in. In addition, we would be requesting of the DDA, and this would require additional approval from the DDA board, a total of one million dollars related to the time period prior to June thirty, twenty twenty-three, and an additional five hundred thousand dollars for the current fiscal year that we are in. In addition to the items mentioned in the memo, I also want to point out that the amounts that would be requested from the DDA do fall within the parameters of the currently existing financing contract for the twenty eighteen revenue bonds. So, that mechanism does currently exist. In addition, we will be working with the DDA to review parking fees and consider changes, including the possibility of reinstating the five-dollar flat fee after five P.M. for the Center Street and eleven-mile structures, and a review of the monthly permit parking fees to ensure that those are proper for the current timeframe. Those fees have not been adjusted since twenty seventeen. And in addition, we currently have a request for proposal out for the management services related to the parking decks, and we are looking at other major cost items for potential RFPs to see if we can cut back on any of the costs that the fund is incurring. So, with these items, we are hopeful that it will not only correct the shortfalls that occurred during COVID, but it will also correct the path going forward and will allow the fund to regain its health. So, before you is the plan that I am proposing to submit to the Department of Treasury. Again, it does need to be accompanied by the action of the commission that would confirm that plan of action moving forward.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Ms. Lichtenberg? Commissioner Douglas?
Thank you. Great presentation, you know, good job figuring out how we can fix this shortfall. It's extremely disappointing that we need to spend two-point-five million dollars that could have been four amazing parks, I think fifteen tennis courts, a lot of cool, fun things. I notice our parking partner is not here tonight, as they're never here, and my frustration is going to probably boil over in a second, so I won't say too much more, because there might be potential litigation. But I guess I hope from the city that we see our attorneys dealing with this matter in a closed session and a lengthy discussion on recuperating some of these funds and potentially holding an escrow future payments based on what's going on, because it's absolutely ridiculous that we are in a parking deficit with over a thousand surface parking spaces, I think five thousand spaces in our garages. So, you know, I know there are multiple factors that have led into this. I'm not, I won't say any one led more than another, but I would like to dive deeper into the causes of this and potential solutions besides taking money out of the general fund every year.
I do have one question. I understand we are submitting this proposal to the state. Is there any danger of them, you know, coming back and saying, this may not be a feasible plan moving forward? Like, you may be able to clear this up now, but moving forward, we're not quite sure that this will not result in a deficit down the road? Or is this something that we can submit, and then they, you know, take and believe that it's something that can be helpful and useful moving forward in keeping us in the positive down the road?
While it is a possibility that they would come back and ask for additional clarification, it is my hope that this would provide sufficient support. It is, in my opinion, a clear pathway, and I, we will get a relatively quick response from the state, and I'm hopeful that it will meet their requirements.
Thank you. And thank you for your presentation and your work in getting this done. So, I understand there's a quick turnaround on this, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
The only item I would add to that, or comment I would add to that, is after submittal, we do have the right to amend this plan, should we find other revenue from other sources, as you may have alluded to or whatnot. So, the first step is getting it out to the state, but in some ways, this is a living document moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other questions for Ms. Lichtenberg? Does anyone want to make a motion? Does anyone want to make a motion? Oh, Commissioner Macy, thank you. I'll move approval. All right. Second, that was Commissioner Kolo, second. Any discussion? No discussion? All right, we'll move for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have a plan, out of debt. All right, and I believe that concludes our first meeting of the new year, and good evening. I'll move to adjourned, I'm so sorry. Anyone?
Second.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed? All right, we got, I was so eager.